Hey Paul.
Hello, can you hear me?
I can, can you hear me?
I can, that's a good start.
Excellent. All right.
Okay, so what time is it, seven?
Yeah. Seven oh three.
Okay.
We're missing Barnett from Westside.
That's okay, when he joins in, we have a quorum, right?
Yeah, he's on.
Okay, so this meeting is called to order, let's rise for the pledge, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag.
The United States of America and to the Republic of which is founded, one nation, under God.
Thank you, everybody. All right, roll call, trustees McQ.
Present.
Burnett?
Here.
Gluck?
Here.
John?
Here.
Mayor McFadden, present. All right, so I'm going to start off with some comments. I want to welcome you to the Board of Trustees meeting. It's over Zoom. During the meeting and the public hearings and public comment periods, your microphones will be muted. So when you want to speak during the public hearings and the regular comment periods during the regular meeting, you can use your chat feature. And let's see, can you run them through how to use their chat feature, John?
Yeah, so no problem. On the bottom or the top of your Zoom screen, whether you're on a computer or iPhone or iPad, there will be several features on the bottom, including participants and chat. And what you want to do is just simply hit the chat button. And what should pop up on the side is a box or a pop-up screen that you can chat either privately or to everyone in the group. So there's been some messages right now from some people participating today.
Okay, so thank you very much, John. So during those public comment sections and during the public hearing, if you just write your name, I'd like to make a comment or question, queue it up, and then when we start turning your mic on, we'll turn the mic on of the person who's made the comment, and then we'll turn it off and go to the next one. So look, there's going to be maybe some technical issues, we'll do our best. We will address your comments on a first come, first served basis. Be patient, as I said, if we experience technical difficulty. Before we continue the meeting, I would like to thank the residents for their cooperation in following the state, federal, and local guidelines to prevent transfer of the coronavirus. And I would like to thank the village employees again, including the police department, for standing on the front lines for the residents. We cannot thank you enough. Finally, I would like to thank our fire EMS and healthcare personnel throughout Orange County. We couldn't do this without you. So with that, I'm going to call the public hearing and trustees, I switched the order. So the first hearing is going to be the 2020 to 2021 preliminary budget. So I moved to open the public hearing on the 2020 to 2021 preliminary budget. They have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Oh, I'm sorry, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anyone else? We've got two ayes.
Aye.
Great, okay, so we have three. So the ayes have it. All right, so the purpose of this hearing is to hear comments for the proposed budget. And just to let you know, it's not a final budget, the budget can be changed if the board chooses to do so, or it can be adopted without changes. So I'll just start with my comments on the budget and then hand it to the trustees, and then we'll bring it to the public. First, I wanted to thank trustee McQ and his team for giving me a budget to review with little or no fat. I'm opposed to exceeding the 2% cap this fiscal year, however. Times are tough and we all need to make sacrifices. Some background for you, I received the budget given to me by the trustees. As I said, the budget had little if any fat, but it was something like 2.39% over the 2% cap. In an attempt to lower the expenses, after the trustees gave me the budget, I met with department heads Debbie, Jeff, and Dave, that would be DPW, a general for Debbie, DPW for Jeff, and police budget for Dave. And I asked them to lower the expenses so we could get below the cap. It was very painful. And we were able, by making some serious sacrifices and expenses, to keep it below the cap. Now, then, the next procedure was to return that and share it with the trustees. And we went back and forth on what items we, if they wanted to accept all my items, that would have brought it below the cap, or we compromised on some, and that's what we did. The, as I mentioned earlier, the budget I was given had no fat, really. So the changes I requested are actual sacrifices, deep cuts. For example, one of the things that Jeff said about the DPW in terms of cutting expenses was cutting the $400,000 road cleaning line item, which is actually paving and maintenance as well. But the government requires us to call it that on the line item. So that would mean a reduction in miles of road scheduled for repaving to get below the cap, which is what I support, and we can discuss that further. But we would, we basically say, look, if you don't want taxes to go up, we've got to make some sacrifices on repairing and repaving, for example. Thank you. Trustees, do you care to comment?
I don't, I'm more interested in public comment, public input, and then maybe we can respond to that.
All right, any other trustee? Okay, so why don't we open it up for public comments? Now, this was where it gets tricky. We have to look at the chat, and we have to, we have to then contact you and turn your mic on. So have you, anyone that wants to speak, have you already gone in there? Okay.
It does not.
Kay Breland. Kay Breland, would you like to have your mic turned on? Let's turn that on, please. Kate? And Kate, you want to, oh, I see it's still muted, let me see if I can, oh, it's on now. All right, Kate, what's your question?
It's Kimberly, I didn't have a question, I was just saying hello to everybody.
Okay, hello, how are you?
But since now you unmuted my mic, are we, you're only doing the roads as a cut from the budget, or there are other items as well?
There was a significant number of items that totaled enough savings, lowering expenses to bring us below the cap. And we had a list of those items, which we went over, and we discussed those, compromised on some, and came up with the budget that we're looking at now. And if you would like, let's see, Debbie's on the line. Debbie, can, do you have, can you email me the cuts we made, including the cuts that were proposed by our chief? And then we can share them with the rest of the people on the line. Is that okay, Ms. Breland?
Yes.
Terrific. Oh, you're welcome. All right, so we're going to close your mic for now, and we're going to move on to, thank you, whoever, okay, we're going to move on to Shell. Do you have a question, Shell, or are you just saying hello? Can we take Shell's?
Shell was just saying hello as well, yes.
Okay, well, we want to say hello back. How are you holding up there?
Great, I see, you know, you and Robin and Brock, you know, walking by every day.
I think everyone has seen Brock, but we'll move on on that. All right, so we can turn your mic off. Now we have Walter Dean. Walter, did you want to say hello or to discuss the letter that you sent about the taxes? Can we have Walter's mic on, please? Walter Dean?
Okay, how does that work?
That's perfect.
All right, well, thank you all for working so hard for Tuxedo Park, and I really appreciate you doing this Zoom session with us all. I just wanted to urge you to not actually try to increase the cap, if that's the right way to say it, but to reduce the taxes. And I also urge all of you as trustees and as the mayor to send notices to the town and to the school to recommend that taxes be reduced. We really are obviously in a crisis with this whole virus situation, et cetera. I think a lot of people that we don't even realize are now unemployed or underemployed. Many of us are not able to go to our offices, et cetera, and I think this is just the wrong time to be increasing taxes. And it's hard to see exactly what the expenses are in the budget. As you mentioned, for instance, the street cleaning is actually the paving, but something like the tree board that I see is $1,500. I don't know exactly what the tree board does. If it's a group that tells people not to cut trees down on their own properties, maybe we should just look at things like that and say, let's let people use their own judgment with trees for a year or two or three. But we're at a point in Tuxedo now where we have 34 houses for sale. It's very tough to get buyers to look at the properties with taxes, $100,000, $90,000, $80,000, $70,000. And we're not listing new houses now because we're not allowed to list new houses now. We can't have in-house listing presentations, we can't take people to see properties. But you look at something like the Tyler House, the taxes on that, it's on the south side of the lake. I would think that someone that buys it would probably tear it down. Taxes are over $62,000. There's a house in the middle of Circuit Road and Circuit Road and Circuit Road that's been on the market for years and years. Taxes are in excess of $67,000. This cannot continue, and I think the village has to focus on reducing expenses. And again, I think that we really need to get everyone in the village, and everyone specifically in village leadership, to urge the school and the town to further reduce taxes. I have reached out to the school, I've not gotten responses. I've also reached out to the town and not gotten responses. But all three entities must reduce taxes if Tuxedo is going to be a viable place in the future.
Thank you. Alan McQ or Paul Gluck, trustees, do you want to address this $1,500? Because I don't think it's for just cutting trees. I think it has something to do with the racetrack committee, I'm not sure.
Actually, neither. The Tree Advisor Board, we are part of Tree City USA. This is a pass-through. It's, we have 600 odd residents, and it's a per capita amount basis, the census. And it allows us, one, to advertise we're part of Tree City USA, but more importantly, it opens us up to potential grants, and what we did on the south end of Tuxedo Lake, and also what we did at the DPW and by Centennial Wall.
Let's turn Chauncey's off. Sorry to Alan.
So this, the answer to the question is, this is a line item, but it's a pass-through, and the village is compensated for this. So we need to have it in our budget to be a member of Tree City USA. If you look at our expenses year-to-date, they're $12. So this is a line item, but doesn't adversely affect our budget, but does give us the opportunity, one, to get grants, two, to get advantageous ability to do the trees for trips and things along those lines.
So it's an association we've joined, and it has the benefit of allowing us to use grants. Okay, Walter, I just wanted to answer that for you. And also, just a tip, a lot of rail contractors are doing virtual tours. So I don't know if you're prepared to do that, but that's one way to get around it. Okay, and just before we move on, I want to remind everybody that the comments you make today will be considered when we close the hearing in terms of changing the budget. So this is a time to do that. All right, so who do we have next? Omar to everyone. Omar, did you have something to say? And where's Omar? Oh, over here on the bottom left of my screen, if we can turn his mic on. Omar, did you have something you wanted to say?
Yeah, well, I don't know who was speaking initially about reducing the taxes, but I absolutely agree. I mean, I've only been an owner for two years, but I've lived in Monroe and I spent some time in New York City. And the question that I have is, what can Tuxedo Park do to bring people to want to live there? This is 40 miles from the city, okay? And yeah, and I know that there's salt, you know, the salt tax, that that's actually, you know, preventing a lot of people from wanting to live in high, you know, high tax states. So what can we do as a town to bring taxes down, but to also increase the amount of people that want to live there?
Yeah, that's a great question. I mean, I'll just give you the difference between our village and a typical municipality, for example, the town. The town has revenue from commercial, industrial, manufacturing, hospitality, and a variety of other incomes from different building types and zoning, whereas Tuxedo Park only has one, and that is residential, that is new homes. So the taxes that we collect or distribute will go down with new homes. And so that's always the case with us. So we're unique in that way. It's difficult, because our only source of income is property tax.
Now, what about tourism? What about, you know, like, I know that in some municipalities like Beacon or places like that, they're figuring out ways to lure people into, take advantage of the outdoors. And I know Michael Bruno has done a lot in that area, where he's trying to make it a destination. What about designating some areas, kind of like the Renaissance Park, maybe having food trucks, and they pay, you know, fees, you know? I mean, I moved, I grew up Monroe, but I lived in South Florida for 10 years, and they will get a lot of their money from the actual businesses. You know, people that want to, you know, maybe we can have a fair, maybe, you know, throughout the year to just bring more money. So tax, property taxes don't have to go up, but they'll be getting it from somewhere else.
Well, I think that that's a terrific idea. Unfortunately, for 30 or so years, the feeling in the village has been that we do not want movies being filmed, events, and, you know, pictures taken of houses without permission from the owner. And so these things may be feasible, but would require several public hearings and changing of the local laws. So that's why we are not doing it now. But I appreciate the question. Let's move on. Who else do we have? And thank you very much. Who do we have now? Now, let's see.
It looks like you have two.
We have Meg Vaughn. Is Meg available? Can we take her microphone off? And again, I appreciate your patience as we try and learn this.
That's okay, I'm here, I didn't have anything to say, I was just participating in the chat here.
Okay, all right, very good, thank you. And Jill Swerble?
I am on chat.
Would we, would we like to open up Jill Swerble's microphone, please?
I'm good.
Open my microphone to say that.
Jill, did you want to say anything?
I'm good at the moment, thanks.
Okay, wait, it says you're cursing Walter Dean? Why is that?
It says to everyone, just identify who I am.
Okay, I see, okay, this is working well. Now, Chauncey, did you want to have a comment?
I'm not in it.
Yes, look, I said to everyone, look, Walter Dean to everyone.
Right, right, I see, yeah, these, yep, so, but specifically, I'm looking for comments or questions or ways to reduce expenses. Everyone probably has the current budget in front of them. Now, Sally, can someone turn Sally's off? Microphone on, I mean? Sally Sonny?
Sally.
Galaxy?
Galaxy.
S10?
Yep.
I identified, okay, Sally, there you are. Do you have anything you'd like to say?
Yes, hello, everyone. Well, yes, I would like to say something. I have looked at the budget, and I'm sure everyone worked very hard, and it is a tight budget. But I feel very strongly that at this time, we're all over, but also in Tuxedo Park, people have lost their jobs, people have reduced salaries, people have much less income because of the stock market, and people are suffering, almost everyone, not everyone, but almost everyone. And I think that maybe Tuxedo Park has to behave the same way. And this is something that you might hate me for. But I'm looking at our personnel. I mean, a lot of these things are set in stone. But I can't believe that we would be giving raises at this time. In fact, when so many people are taking cuts, maybe we should consider a cut. I see that the police are going up, you know, everything is getting more and more. And forever and ever, the village has thought, well, we just ask for more and we get it. And I think this is a time to stop that. And not only do I think you shouldn't go over the cap, you shouldn't go to the cap, you should actually reduce the budget. And that's my opinion.
Well, thank you, I think those are good comments. Yes, in terms, now, I don't know if everyone knows, but Debbie Matthews has retired. And she will.
She will be retiring, she still isn't employed.
Let me finish, I was actually going to say that. She's retired, and the date certain for her leaving has not been established at this point in time. But I am going to be looking at that opportunity to replace Debbie, which is going to be extremely difficult, and I'm sure we won't find anybody with her experience level. But we will be able to save money on salary. So that's one positive, and that's my opinion. If we end up having to pay more, so be it. But I believe we can do it with a reduced salary, so that's what I'll be fighting for.
All right, I might, I'll throw my two cents in response to Sally's comment. With regard to, we have two labor contracts coming up this upcoming year. We've got the DPW and the police. DPW, the assumption was a 2% wage increase. The PBA assumption was a 3% wage increase.
That's a lot.
That, that, that is what we have put in the budget? Is that what we're asking for? No. Is that where we're going to end up? Who knows? But you have to have a realistic number in there. With regard to our staff employees and John, Debbie, and Denise won't be happy, we've got an assumption of a 0% increase there. And part of that will come with potential, some cost savings with Debbie leaving. But whether or not we can find a unique person to do Debbie's job is up for debate, and it might be two or three different people doing her job. So whether or not there'll be cost savings there, who knows?
All right, it's possible we could just make a salary cap on what we would pay. But Alan, you're right, we don't know if it's going to be one, two, or three people. Okay, so let's see, we went down through, oh, Powellah.
Yes.
Okay, there you are, hi. Do you have anything you'd like to discuss?
Yes, I would like to just add something. First of all, thank you all for the work you're doing through this very difficult, stressful time. I truly appreciate it as a long-term resident. I know that many communities are postponing payment of taxes, school taxes, property taxes. And I was wondering if this is something that the village would consider, and certainly vis-à-vis the town, if, I guess, the proper procedure is to have you as mayor and trustees address the town, if you could address the town and see if the school tax could be postponed, or if any postponement could be considered.
Yeah, that's a great question. I'm going to also invite our attorney, Brian, to comment after I finish. But my understanding is that we cannot, there is no program currently available for municipalities or villages to do that. In other words, no reimbursement, no interest loans that can turn into grants. However, I'll ask Brian, Brian, is this something we could do on our own without state sanctions?
Mayor, I don't believe so. You would need some sort of authorization in order to be able to waive, basically, or delay tax payments. That may be something that's forthcoming, but at this point, we haven't seen anything, you know, other than income tax delays. But, you know, we keep looking at the guidance and the executive orders as they come out. So maybe something that happens, but I don't think the village could do that on its own.
Thank you. So just clues this, I'm sorry, Brian, did you have more to say?
That was trustee McQ.
Just throw something else in here, is, given the size of the village, our tax base is guaranteed by Orange County. So the last thing we want to do is jeopardize being made whole on our tax revenue by altering anything in that regard.
Thank you, Alan. I'll just add one final thing to that, because the idea of payments, the police have had several cases of COVID, and also several cases of officers having to go into self-quarantine because they feel that they maybe were near somebody. And because we have a small force, the only way to deal with extra shifts that are now vacant is overtime paid by the people that are available. So I contacted NICOM, which is the New York State Mayor's Associate Group, and they are looking into this for me. There is currently nothing available. And so I spoke with Barbara, who's the head of their lobbying arm, and I then sent out an email to every mayor in Orange County, asking if they're having a similar problem. And if they are, we can get together, power and numbers, and maybe Albany will ultimately reimburse municipalities that are having these issues. I think it makes sense, and that's why I'm pursuing it. Okay, let's see who else we have. We've got Shell, did you want to say something, Shell Farley? And all of the mics off, please? Shell, want to turn your mic on?
Sure. No, my question was just simply, I was looking at how much money it looks like has been paid to date, and you've done an amazing job in the 19 to 20 budget. It looks like you're at $3.3 million, but the budget for the whole year is 4.3. So it appears to me you'll have some pretty significant savings, and maybe those could be applied to the 2021 budget.
Thank you. I think that what you may be looking at, our fiscal year ends when, Alan, in June?
May 31st.
May 31, okay. So we haven't had all of our expenses come in, because our fiscal year is not over. So we can only guesstimate, but I know that it's going to be closer to what we had budgeted last year. And if there's leftover, maybe that's something we'll play with, but just to clear that up. Okay. Oh, that's some nice stuff going on to Debbie. Okay, does anyone else want to comment on ways to reduce our expenses or make a general comment? If so, please give us a chat with your name, letting us know. I'll just wait a minute and see if anything comes in. This is working out well so far, don't you think? Okay. All right, so.
It looks like Sarah E. may be wanting to make a comment. She is unmuted.
Hi, it's Sarah and John, actually. Can you see, hear us?
Yes.
Okay, finally. Thank you. Just speaking, I agree with what Walter said to begin with. There are a lot of things going on besides the current situation that has impacted what's happening with taxes in Tuxedo, and salt certainly is one, which makes us particularly unattractive when you start talking to people about the taxes in Tuxedo. Though, we agree that we should keep it at the cap and not exceed it. Do you want to say something?
No, we agree with Walter. No, we agree with Walter.
Okay, thank you very much. And I don't believe there's any more comments. So I'm going to close the hearing. I moved to close the public hearing on the 2020. Yes. Someone say something?
Looks like one more question.
Oh, please, I'm sorry. One more comment? Please proceed.
Yes, hi, can you hear me? This is Paula.
Yes.
Okay, it has been brought up by a few people that I know about the water. Can anybody hear me? Can you hear me?
Let's close the other mics, please, and only keep Paula's open.
Okay, thank you. It's been talked about with a number of people in my neighborhood and also afar about the water flushing and the mains. And I would just like to clarify. I didn't think, from judging the past, or perhaps I don't remember, that they, people are thinking that the water's gonna be completely turned off from 7:30 until, I think it's 2:00 or 2:30. Is that true? Is that a fact?
I'll refer that to Alan McHugh.
The answer to that is, I believe, not. I think the recommendation is when it's in your area, it would behoove you not to use much water because you don't wanna get any sediment in your house lines. That's why the notification's coming out, but I'll get confirmation of that from Jeff.
Okay, well, also, I think that because we're all basically sheltering in place right now, that's gonna be harder than normal to do, you know, with everybody being at home. And I don't think anybody wants to jeopardize their water system. So is there a way that flushing the mains could be postponed?
The straight answer is yes. Let me speak to Jeff and then we'll revert. Or we'll respond accordingly and deal with it that way. Because it's entirely a legitimate question. I'm not, yeah. I can check with Jeff and I'll get back to you.
Okay, thank you very much. Thank you.
Yep.
Thank both of you. Okay, I'm gonna then move to close the public hearing on the 2020 to 2021 preliminary budget. Now you have a second.
I thought, I think Chauncey had a question. Chauncey, did you have a question? In the chat, there's a question.
Okay, sure. You guys can, look, we're not gonna close the hearing until everybody's spoken. So if you have questions, let's keep them coming.
Our question is a very simple one. Is what sort of financial position are we gonna be in at the end of this fiscal year? Over or under or how?
Good question. I'll leave that to Alan or Paul.
Sorry, over and under this year's budget?
With our estimate for the rest, for the final quarter, do we believe we'll come in under budget or over budget?
Will be under budget. We're just working on the order magnitude right now. And obviously, that sum will be, depending on where the votes come today, that will factor into what the budget is and potential tax increase or no tax increase.
What you're saying is the surplus that you're anticipating this year will be applied to next year's expenditures.
Correct. I always hate the word surplus because last year we took from the unallocated surplus to fill the hole in the budget for this fiscal year. So we're, the whole, you know, art of this is, is what, we have to protect the village from unanticipated expenditures. That's why we carry an allocated surplus. But, you know, you've got that delicate balancing act. You don't wanna tax the residents too much, but you don't want to have too little in reserve in the event something cataclysmic happens. So it's basically, it's a buffer. And the range that the controller recommends is between 10 and 20% of your budget.
Well, I apologize, I should've said over or under budget on a cash basis.
Thank you, Mr.
Thank you. And you, I don't know if you can turn your own mic off or if we have to turn it off. John, is that, what do you think?
I can do it.
Okay, thank you. All right, I'm gonna wait a minute. Is Shell, is this a new question? How large is the reserve? Could you open up Shell? Shell, is this a new question?
Yes, I mean, it was just, the question came up. So if the reserve is supposed to be, you know, 20 to 25% of the budget, how large is the reserve? That would imply it should be about a million dollars.
First and foremost, nobody said it was meant to be 20 and 25% of the budget. It's meant to be between 10 and 20% of the budget. On May 31st, 2019, it was at $644,000.
And the reason we have these surpluses and why we have a certain percentage is because the comptroller mandates it. We've, in the past, we used to be way below the contingency. And now we've gotten it to a point where it's been acceptable and our bond rating is back up. I think it's AAA. Someone correct me if I'm wrong. But we've straightened that out over the last couple of years. Thank you, Shell. All right, so please, Alan, please.
It's not mandated by the state. It's encouraged by the controller's office. Just to give you an order of magnitude, when we had the wall litigation, the unallocated surplus got down to a low in May 31st, 2016 of $98,000. In the last 20 years, it has, the peak has been, going into the 2008 financial crisis, it was $1,040,000. Just to give you an order of magnitude.
Thank you. Any other questions? Okay, so I'm gonna close the hearing because no one, there's no overflow of comments where we would have to extend the public hearing. So I moved to close the public hearing on the 2020-2021 preliminary budget. May I have a second, please?
Second.
Any discussion?
Yes, David.
Yes.
So I'd just like to suggest leaving it open for written comments for another day in case anyone, you know, wants to put anything else in writing. We have the flexibility to do that, I think.
Well, basically, if we do that, we would have to have it before the 20th, which would mean another meeting. You know, look, I'll ask Brian his thoughts, but since there's no additional comments at this point, I don't know why we couldn't close the public hearing. If somebody writes and follows up, that could be added to the record.
No, it can't.
Brian, what do you think?
Well, your first point is correct. If you keep it open, one of the issues is the tax cap question. I'm not sure if we're above or below, but if we're above, you need to adopt that, you know, before you adopt the budget. So, you know, it's one thing, it needs to be done, but if you continue only for writing, you could, in theory, adopt the local law tonight, you know, and then accept comments in writing. But I'm not sure how, unless you meet again, you're going to give consideration to those comments.
All right, let me go around the horn. Alan, do you think we should close it? Or do you feel that there's a reason to keep it open and then meet before the 20th and conclude it then? So it's one more meeting? Or do you feel that we've already gotten the comments that we need?
I think it behooves us to continue to have optionality. So I don't want to close it. I think we should continue to leave it open.
Mayor, if I may, I think you're misunderstanding what I was suggesting. It wasn't to leave the public hearing open to another meeting. It was to leave it open just for another day in case people wanted to write in additional comments. So you would, you don't need to have another meeting in order to have it closed under those circumstances.
Right, okay, so we could, so in other words, accommodate that we could close it with a date for tomorrow, at like 5 o'clock or something. Is that acceptable to you? That would do it? Okay, so I moved to close the, this is what, the fifth time I've said this. All right, I moved to close the public hearing on the 2020 to 2021 preliminary budget on April 16th, 2020, at 5:00 PM. And invite additional comments, written or oral.
Can I?
Yes.
So I think the suggestion would be to close the public hearing with respect to public comments tonight with an opportunity expiring at 5:00 PM tomorrow, April 16th, for additional written comments.
Okay, the question there would be, if we keep it open through tomorrow afternoon, why wouldn't somebody be able to do another comment?
Because they can't deliver a verbal comment. They can only deliver a written comment because we won't have a meeting. I'm just trying to provide an opportunity for additional people to comment if they want to.
In writing. Okay, I moved to close the public hearing on the 2020 to 2021 preliminary budget at 5:00 PM, 4/16/2020, to collect any written comments regarding the budget. May I have a second, if you guys think that's okay? Think I nailed it? Is that acceptable to you, the resolution?
Yes, yes.
Okay, so can I have a second, please?
Second.
All, any discussion? All in favor? Eyes have it. Now, we've closed the hearing and we have taken the suggestions of, that are, of people that are in the meeting with us. Do members of the board wish to propose any changes or alterations to the budget as presented? So that means that you do not want to change the budget and you are accepting that we'll go over the cap. I'll go with Paul. Paul, is that the understanding?
Not necessarily, you know, I think, you know, the budget and the budgetary process is kind of ongoing. You know, it starts in January with department head suggestions. We've had, oh, a number of meetings, massaging that, getting the number down, getting it more correct, getting it more focused. We are where we are now and we put out, because we have certain statutory deadlines, the preliminary budget that the mayor and all other trustees voted in favor of as being, you know, the best job that we all collectively could do at that particular point. Doesn't mean that we can't continue to work on this. And in fact, my suggestion would be that we do do that. But we do, you know, move on to the next agenda item, which is our tax cap proposal and leave that in place so that we have an ability to come up with a responsible budget if that happens to exceed the cap.
All right, in terms of protocol, we did extend the hearing, which has to close by April 20th. And we then consider, since it's closed, what we're doing now, if the board wants to make any changes. If there are changes and we are over the cap afterwards, then we would move on and open the public hearing for local law one. And if we today determined that, or tomorrow determined that it would be below the cap, then we would not have to have that second hearing and we would not have to adopt that law. So.
Mayor, can I just jump in? I would suggest that, you already have the public hearing scheduled tonight. You can open the public hearing on the local law to exceed the tax cap. But if you anticipate working on this budget further before May 1st and the board may get together again, you can just continue that public hearing. Leave it open and then, you know, you'll know the outcome on the budget. All that really needs to be done is if you are gonna exceed the cap, that local law has to be adopted, even if it's on May 1st, you know, immediately prior to the budget being adopted. So you could still open it, but just not vote on adopting the local law tonight if you're gonna meet again before May 1st.
Well, that will save me about 15 minutes reading that resolution you wrote. Okay, so in that case, I would like to move to enter the public, excuse me, to enter the public hearing on local law introductory one of 2020. Now you have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Paul. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. The ayes have it. All right, so as far as, as everyone sort of realizes now, the tax cap limit, if we pass this local law, the board will have the option to exceed the New York State mandatory maximum 2% property tax increase, what I call the cap. If we finalize a budget that is at the cap or below, then we do not have to pass this legislation, local law introductory 220, 1220. So now that everyone understands that, I believe, does anyone want to comment on the cap, even though we will not be voting on it tonight to pass or reject? Any of the trustees want to care to comment on this particular law?
No.
Any members of the public, would you like to comment on this? I know many of you have already said that you do not approve of us exceeding the cap and would prefer not, for us not to pass this law, giving us the flexibility. So are there any more comments like that that someone would like to present? I see that we have Claudio Guzzoni, and he has a comment. Can we turn on Claudio's mic?
It should be on there.
Okay, Claudio, I think you're good to go.
Well, thank you, Mayor. One of the comments I would like to make is when negotiating with outside providers, negotiating with the police, we're already showing them that we are happy to have a 3% increase. If we show them that we're very happy to blow through the budget, you know, we're not really negotiating with very strong cards in our hands. So the budget cap is to put it, put into place to give the mayor and the trustees some cards in their hands where they're negotiating against public unions. That's why it was originally put into place by Albany. If we blow, if we pass a law saying that we really care, well, then I don't think we're gonna have a great negotiating capability with the unions and with any of the other providers out there.
Yeah, that's a great observation. When I was given the budget, I met with Jeff Voss and his, for his budget with DPW, the chief's budget and the general budget under Debbie. And I said to these guys, look, I don't wanna go over the cap, period. And so you're gonna have to make cuts for me that are gonna hurt, but they're gonna get us back down to the cap, which I did. And we were able to get it down to the cap. And with that, I brought that to the trustees and we negotiated those and made compromises. And we are now still over the cap. But I agree 100% with you. And look, it was a, look, okay, so we're over the cap. Guys, you have to take X% across the board, wherever you want, because we've got to stay below the cap. That was the strategy I used, and they did make some good cuts. The chief made some tough cuts. And the cut that Jeff Voss, DPW, felt would be the best would be doing something with that 400K for the roads. So I agree 100% with you. You have to come from a position of strength. The fact is, you know, I don't wanna go over the cap because I agree. Then you had, then it's a slope where you feel you have that flexibility. But that's what we're here to discuss. But that's what we're here to discuss today and I appreciate your comment.
I've got one more thing, Mac.
Please, please.
You know, I think you're doing a great job. It'll be great to see if you can get a few of the trustees on board with you.
I would like that and I don't think they're opposed to it. I think they'll do whatever they can to, to help here, if that's, if that's what's going to happen. Thank you, Claudio. Good to see you. Okay. So.
Mac, can I make a comment?
Absolutely.
Okay, so I think there's a, what I'm hearing the public saying, and I'm taking, you know, I'm a big taxpayer too here. I think what I'm hearing the public saying is they don't want a tax increase at all. I just want to clarify something that we're talking about in terms of the tax cap. The tax cap is set at a certain percentage, so if the assumption is there will be a tax increase. Whether we go over the tax cap, meaning 2% increase is what the tax, tax cap legislation deals with. But what I've heard the public say today is, is don't increase the taxes and lower them if you possibly can. And believe me, that is every trustee's goal. And I think that particularly Alan McHugh, Paul and Alan Barnett have worked very hard to try to do that and go through every line item at painstaking detail. So, but I just want people to understand when we're talking about the tax cap, that's over an increase of 2%. So, and I'm not saying that's where we're going to go. But I think that, I think people have to understand that that's really what we're talking about. And we're all taxpayers and, and any pain that we ask a department to make, it's not like a corporation, we're not asking people in that department to feel the pain. It's all of us are going to feel the pain and whether or not those, those cuts, when you tell somebody to make a 10% cut, whether those cuts make sense or not from a community perspective is what we all have to value. So what I would like to hear on the comment period is if you cut certain services, how would you feel about it? If we had, for instance, for argument's sake, one police officer at night, that would cut substantially cut costs, how would you feel about that? If we cut our garbage contract, as Sally had suggested in previous emails, to one pickup a week, how would you feel about that? If you didn't pave your roads, how would you feel about that? Those are the kind of things that we need to know when we're making these value determinations. Thank you.
Yeah, that's a great introduction. I'll be with you in a second, Paul. That's a great introduction. I wish we'd said that in the beginning because now I'm almost, I would like to go back and see people's answers to those questions. So we cannot do that. We, did we, we closed the hearing tomorrow for written. So it, right now it's still open for public comments.
Mayor, you could still, yeah, you could still take the comments in this public hearing. You're in a public hearing about the tax cap, so it's still all relevant to this public hearing.
Okay, well, I think what you suggested, Maureen, are very good ideas. And anyone in the audience care to address things like, do you, okay, what's your view if we really cut the road budget? And that means there's going to be no new paving this year, for example, other than Clubhouse Road, which is under current budget. How would you feel if we had only one police officer on duty at night? And Maureen, you mentioned a couple other, do you want to repeat them?
Cutting.
Oh, garbage, thank you. Someone whispered. Garbage collection maybe once. So let me just get a general poll from everyone that's attending. How they feel about those things and we could start, if you want, around the horn, say with Kimberly Breland, then Chauncey, Marie Claude, Rand Myers. And so forth. If anybody wants to comment on this, please let us know through chat right now and we will get to you. But I'd really like to know how you feel about roads and other things, if we can get below the cap, the 2% cap.
Well, and again, it's just, what I was, I'm saying is reducing taxes together, whether it's 2%, less than 2%, more than 2%, it's reducing the cost of running this village. And one other thing is, would people be comfortable with the off, village office open only three days a week for argument's sake? Or something like that. I'm not sure, you know, I haven't, we haven't thought about some of these.
I'd like to explore all those. Is there anyone in the, in the audience that would like to comment or answer Maureen's questions?
Mayor, it looks like there may be from Sarah and John. They, they may have commented first.
Oh, hi, Sarah. Okay, can we turn their mic on, please?
Muted.
There we go. Thank you very much. Hi, John.
How are you?
Good, you're on camera, so you better sit up.
I know, I know.
And you're a little bit off camera, Sarah, but I guess that's okay.
You're off camera.
Oh, sorry.
Just her shoulder. There you go. Okay, so yes, please take the floor.
Well, now, in terms of cutting the office hours and things like that, I mean, we always go back to the push-pull of what percentage of the park is there full time versus non-full time. And cutting office hours, I think is fine. And including, if possible, you include a Saturday for those people who are paying full boat taxes but are not there full time. And I know that's a push-pull we have. I mean, just, just in terms in general. So trash one day a week, that's fine for the people who are not there full time. Does that work for everybody else? So we have, we have to balance a little bit of that as well. But I think keeping it, Maureen, I appreciate what you were saying about even if you keep the cap, it still may mean your taxes are going up. And you are hearing two different things from people in terms of whether you want to reduce taxes to keep it where it is, which means it's obviously below the cap. And that's something that you guys have to look at and address. But I think there could be ways, if you take into consideration the full population that's within the park, and as I said, and a huge percentage is not there full time.
More than half.
More than half, I think was the last number that we looked at. Correct me if I'm wrong. And if, so if you could do some accommodations where, again, as I said, something as simple, there's a Saturday versus another day during the week, that might work out to be better for everybody and you can cut the time. John?
Absolutely. How do you feel about cutting the roads way back? So let's just say no new paving this year.
I, I don't think no new paving as a blanket is the answer. You're going to have some roads that, I'm sorry, there's a giant pothole, there's something that happens, you're going to have to do something. But an overall full repaving of everything probably doesn't make sense budgeting for. So I think, again, some common sense and let's face it, in within budgets, there are areas which can be moved to address those kind of issues. So things can be shifted around, they're always shifted around. You know, question, I think some of the important things that you have going on, John's telling me to be quiet. Some of the important things you have going on is obviously like things like the water. What's happening there? Is that taken care of? Is that, you know, clearly in the budget to make sure that we don't have a lot of missteps, which we've had along the way in that area?
Yeah, that's a, that's a great observation. We have a good amount of money in the water, in the water department. And we've been using that in a targeted way. And so we're not, it's not, you know, we're not concerned about that. We've done a heck of a lot of improvements on the water. And I'm going to let trustee McHugh comment on that if he'd like to, to give you an overview of of the water department and where we stand in terms of.
Yeah, I guess I'm not sure what your question is with regard to the water and the issues you're alluding to, Sarah.
I'm just making sure, has that been taken care of? Is there enough in the budget?
What does that being taken care of mean to you? Because there are two totally separate budgets. One, we have the general budget, which is what this discussion's been about. And then we have a separate budget, which is the water budget.
Within the general budget, I'm assuming there's some budget item within the general budget for water needs, what's happening with the water in the middle?
No, no, all there is, is a $12,000 line item charge from the general budget to the water budget.
Okay.
For administration, nothing else.
Okay, so where then, explain to me then, where does the other money come from if it's not within that budget line?
Where does the money come from, from what? I just, I'm not.
To take care of.
The water department's run by us charging 703 utility customers water fees. And it's run totally separate from the general budget. A quarter of Jeff Voss's salary comes from that, half of John, or three quarters of John Bello's salary comes from that. And 45% of Denise's salary comes from that in terms of billing and managing the operations. Then the rest is O and R is a huge component with pumping and everything. So that's where the main kind of line items are coming from.
Okay, all right, I'll take a look at that.
Just, I guess the bottom line is the water utility is, we have a surplus, we've been running at a surplus last three to four years. But those funds are being dedicated to finding leaks and then remedying them. And, you know, it's a well-known fact that our, our pumping versus our billing is completely, you know, it is miserable in terms of water losses. And that's what we're trying to problem solve and we have been trying to problem solve for the last couple of years.
Okay.
All right, so maybe, you know, look, maybe a phone call or little sidebar on your, on your own, you guys could sort of clear some of that up. But, okay, now I don't see any more questions. I'm going to.
Mayor, I have.
Chauncey, please.
I'm keeping a running list here. I have a list for, there was a question from Jack regarding the DPW, which I can unmute.
Okay, do you want to do Jack with the DPW?
He's, Jack, you're unmuted if you'd like to comment.
Oh, actually, it's Kim. Hi. Hello?
Yeah, we got you.
Oh, hi. No, we were just wondering, there are certain roads, how does the DPW prioritize which roads are done? I mean, do they, the amount of traffic and, you know, we noticed the Weewaw has gotten a lot of attention with little traffic. How do they, how do they decide which roads are going to be seen to first?
Great question. So two years ago, our board put together a list of roads and the ones that needed it the most were on the top. So the ones that were in worse shape were scheduled to get repaved first. And that's where it stands now. I'm, I think the list is available and could be shared with you, not this evening, but tomorrow. And let me double check on that. Trustee Barnett, you were involved in that, right?
Yeah, but that was two or three years ago. I'm not sure what they, I'm seeing, I haven't looked at that since then.
Yeah. Okay. Alan, you might know something.
Personally.
Yeah. I'll get you in a minute, Paul.
Sorry, I'll let Paul and then I'll shut up.
All right, Alan McHugh has given you his time.
Thank you for yielding, thank you for yielding.
Yes.
So, so essentially what we try and do is repave and do maintenance, we call it maintenance on the roads proportionally, so that we don't defer maintenance on roads to future years, so that we don't bill for what needs to get done periodically, the future years. What we've done in the current budget, however, is taken about $40,000 at what would have been next year paving and move that to some point in the future. It's, so that is an example of one bit of the effort that we've tried to do and keep expenditures down as much as possible. We don't like this. Eventually, roads have to get repaved. My, I mean, I think we don't do the, you know, the best job imaginable at, at keeping the roads as well as they should be. But, and this is going to, you know, potentially make that situation a little bit worse. 10% worse, so to speak. But that's, you know, that's an example of the kind of things that, that one potentially has to give up in order to keep the expenditures down.
Right, I just am wondering during a time when not just, you know, the country or the world is in crisis, if maybe, you know, having a few potholes, or maybe I think someone wrote in a comment, seeing how it goes for a year without doing that. Because I just think, I agree with Walter and I agree with what Sally said. You know, we don't want it, people are losing money, people are losing their jobs, people's hours are being reduced, everyone's being hit. No one is exempt and I just think it's, and maybe an option to explore.
Yeah, thank you. I agree.
Okay.
Do we have any other questions?
And I answered just.
Yes, please.
I just add a little bit more color to you. We have around 25 to 30 miles worth of road in the park. Average lifespan of road is 10 years, so you have to do two and a half to three miles of road a year continually, just to maintain. The problem with the Weewaw road was it had been neglected so long. And I think we all remember huge gullies on the side, which were complete hazards and the road was collapsing down to John Cassis's property. So that was part of the reason. With regard to how we choose roads, we do put traffic counters and we do monitor where the most heavily trafficked roads are and address things that way.
Great, that's what we wanted to know that.
Okay, great, thank you.
Can I just, one comment on the roads to consider. When I was suggesting those things, I'm not saying I agree with everything that I was saying at all. But one thing to consider when we're talking about reducing our paving budget, and Kim, I totally get what you're saying, is that, you know, we will come out of this, right? We all know that. And on the other end, when people are now looking at real estate, I think one thing to consider and the people look at is sort of the conditions of the community and the conditions of the road. And that is something that we really need to think about long and hard when we, when we say, don't pave roads for a year or let some potholes. You know, obviously some models here and there are great, are okay, sorry, not great. They're okay to live with, but we have to overall think about how people perceive our community. When, and again, taxes are another element of it, clearly get that. But also perception driving around someplace and it may not be a good selling point from the real estate broker's perspective.
Yeah, I 100% agree, Maureen, 100% agree. But it's our reality and if we don't want to go over the cap, it may be something we have to do. But I agree with what you're saying. I mean, if this place was spick and span, it would be better for property tax resale and buyers. But our reality is right now that we're going to have to make some deep cuts if we're going to get below the cap. And from what I'm hearing from everybody here is that they want us to get below the cap or to no increase. But that's just an observation. Okay, any other comments or questions from the audience?
Mayor, now we have Chauncey is up.
Chauncey, how are you?
Hi, thanks. So a little, a little story, but really I want to talk about the garbage. When we first moved here 30 years ago, my neighbor, Tony Mason, whom some of you may remember or know still, he laughed at me one day and he said, oh, oh, the roads here are worse than the Burma Road. I was like, gee, there are a lot of potholes. Over the last 30 years, I would say that the roads have come up in their maintenance, generally, it's my opinion. And now that I walk the roads a lot, I really do see things that I never kind of see from the car. But roads are in pretty good shape. I don't think it's going to hurt us to like let it go for a year. With a few patching here and there, you know, things happen. But as far as the garbage pickups concerned, I have never understood and thought when I first moved here, wow, two days a week? Wow. And then there was a third day a week when the, when the recycling was picked up and I'm like, whoa, my God, this is so. And you kind of live with it, you kind of, kind of go with it. But frankly, and I live here full time, where Sarah and John don't, and they have the other viewpoint. But I think I could live with one day a week pickup, you know, I really do. I think all of us could. That's all I really want to say.
Thank you, Chauncey. I will definitely take that into consideration. Okay, so any others, John?
Yeah, there's, there's a few. The next is Meg Vaught.
Yes, hello, Meg.
If I'm not saying your name correctly, please.
No, Meg Vaught. Hi, Meg.
Hi, so I just asked my question in the chat, but I was, my comment, actually more than a question, was it's easier for people to give feedback to you as to whether or not they think these cuts are acceptable if they have an idea of what the cuts are. You guys listed three or four pretty big ones. You guys listed three or four pretty big ones to, for people to consider. But do you have other ones in mind and if so, what are they? And if not, can we expect that you would allow the public to comment on them at a later date before just making them?
I would love to do that, if we were to do that, Brian, how would we do it logistically in terms of our schedule?
In other words, to put the information out or to?
Well, in other words, if we were to make a list of where we think we can make cuts and then publish that list. And then receive additional comments or suggestions from people, from the audience. What timeframe crunch would we be under?
Well, for this public hearing, this, unlike your budget hearing, this public hearing doesn't need to be closed by April twentieth. It has to be closed just before you adopt a budget if you exceed the cap. So technically, you have till May first. If you were to meet again, in other words, on April thirtieth or May first, you could continue this hearing longer. The budget hearing just has to close no later than April twentieth. So, in that timeframe, however you want, you could put it out and then have another meeting. You could continue this public hearing to another date and then put out the information and then receive feedback and then have that public hearing later in the month.
Right, so we would have to redo the public hearing, preliminary budget. And we, because we're keeping it open until tomorrow at five, and that wouldn't work, that would just be written comment. So we would go back and extend it to another date, correct?
Well, again, you know, you are in a public hearing that concerns exceeding the cap. So comments can still be received in this public hearing and considered by the board. In other words, the public hearing on the budget is just the public input. The board itself can amend and change that budget between April twentieth and May first as many ways as it wants. And then you can leave this hearing open until you've made your decision. If you end up under the cap, then you close this hearing, you don't adopt the law. And as long as you adopt the budget before May first, you're, you're fine.
Okay, so the fact that we already voted to close the hearing tomorrow at five, we can still have these discussions. And we can still make changes. And if we're under the cap or at the cap, then we don't have to do the local law of introductory one. And if we are above after all of that work, we would have to do it.
That's correct.
Okay, all right, so I think that's great, yeah. I'm sorry, who?
Alan.
Alan.
Oh, hi, Alan.
Hi, can I respond to Chauncey's comments about garbage, just very briefly? We looked at this, when the contract came up in, in, for new this year, I'm sorry, night, December first, twenty-nine, twenty nineteen. And then twenty eighteen, we, Paul and I did a review of the situation, recycling and so forth. Went out and had a meeting in October where it was with the public. At that time, the issue was recycling, the issue was no desire to have curbside pickup. And no desire to, to restrict it, limit it to one day a week because that was viewed as terribly inconvenient to the people who, who didn't live here full-time. So those were the, those were the, those were the big issues. Since then, and by the way, the price of the contract had gone up two hundred and seventy-five dollars a month over eleven years. So the, so Sterling had really kept their price quite low. And when I had to bid, there were no, there were no competing bids. So this was a subject that was debated quite a lot, there were a lot of people who really were concerned about recycling and the purity of that. Times have changed, obviously, but this was an issue that was considered extensively and publicly two years ago.
Yeah, thank you, Alan. I, the only thing that would be different now is that we have to make some hard choices because it's time to deal with property tax. So, uh, I think we can close the, well, we can, we can move back to the public meeting. Brian, do you think I should close this hearing first?
Well, you can either close it or you can continue it if you're going to meet again, that's up to the board.
Okay, so, David, you've got a question. What is the date you think we should continue at, trustees? I bet, there's the twentieth deadline, right? That would be May twentieth?
No, May first deadline, so.
Oh, May first deadline, thank you. So do we want to keep it open until when? Which would give us enough time to pass the resolution, meet, pass the resolution if we're over the cap? Or just make a final budget, pat, approval if we're under budget, under the cap, excuse me.
Mayor?
Basically, Mayor, you have two weeks from tomorrow.
Trustee, luck, please.
So I'd suggest if the intention is to go out to the public with a list of, for instances, on what, what one could cut, right? That might affect quality of life and the like and whether people are willing, and get some feedback on whether people are willing to make those sorts of sacrifices, if you will. Then I think what one needs to do is allow a little bit of time to get that list out and a little bit of time to get some feedback for people. Which to me would seem to be maybe a week?
Uh, no, I agree, I think we may have moved on from doing that to considering those things and then adjusting the budget ourselves. For example, let's say we're going to go to one, one shift at night and then we reset it again with those new changes, we'll receive comments. Now, I could be misunderstanding the procedure, Brian, what did you have in mind?
Sorry, I wasn't, I was muted there. So look, it's entirely up to the board, if you're going to have feedback and you want to just schedule another meeting, continue the public hearing. It's just a matter of timeframe, you basically have two weeks from tomorrow, you know, in which to do that. And either continue this hearing and then work on the budget. I mean, I'd suggest the closer to May first, the better, so you have time to receive any comments and do what you want to do. And then maybe the week of the thirtieth, you know, which is a Friday, I'm sorry, Thursday, you could schedule a meeting, you know, Monday or Tuesday or Wednesday that week.
Okay, so what date works for everybody here? I'm open.
I think we're all open.
Yeah, that's true, it is the quarantine time of year. So trustees, do you have a date you'd like to do this in a time?
How about the twenty-ninth, throw that out there, it's a Wednesday week, two weeks Saturday.
Would that be at seven o'clock, gentlemen and ladies?
Can I?
That's good, that works for me.
Can I ask a question here?
Please.
So, so if our intention is to continue to work on this budget, which is only something we can do in a meeting. I, I'm just not understanding why we would wait till the twenty-ninth, one day, or we have to do it in order to do that. Don't we put our, put some shoulders behind this and get some work done this week, next week?
I say we meet Friday morning if possible to start it, because I think we have, personally, I think we need to come up with a list of sacrifices. And also the savings associated with each, so that we can get that information out to people. So tomorrow, Friday would be, like, I agree with Paul's comment, and I think there's a, a lot of work that has to be done and a lot of feedback we have to go through.
Do you think we can do that, just communicating with each other and then issue the list to the public by posting it? Or announcing it in the mayor's newsletter and then only have our final meeting Friday?
I think you, you can violate the open meetings rule, but I'm, was there a problem with meeting for a couple hours? Because I think it would be a couple hours.
To make the list?
Yeah, and to look at, to make sure we're understanding it correctly. Because, for instance, the garbage contracts, the garbage contract, can it be negotiated, can, you know?
Right, sure, okay, so, yeah, no, I don't have a problem with that, what, when did you want to do that, Maureen?
I suggested Friday morning.
Friday morning? Okay, I'm good. Anyone else?
Eight o'clock it is.
Alan, nice try slipping that in, how about nine thirty?
Mayor, before you close the public hearing, there are, there is a few more people who wish to comment in the box if the board wanted to hear it tonight.
Yes, thank, thank you very much, John.
Sally, Guazzoni, Omar, Kimberly and Walter.
All right, start with who first, first serve.
Sally was first.
Before we go to that, let's just finish off the date, we were very close.
Nine o'clock on Friday.
Nine o'clock on Friday.
Nine thirty on Friday. All right, nine fifteen on Friday. At, okay, nine, how's nine fifteen, Alan?
Fine.
Okay, how about you, Paul? Paul, you're good with it?
I'm free at that time, yes, thank you.
Okay, Mr. Barnett?
I'm free.
Okay, good, so it'll be scheduled for this Friday, nine fifteen. And the agenda is to discuss, to develop a list for public consumption of where we might be able to make cuts to get below the cap. All right, so, let's continue with the list you have, John, of people that wanted to comment.
Okay, first up, we have Sally.
Am I on, hello?
Yes, we can hear you. Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, well, I didn't know I was going to be on again, but I did want to say something just right now because I'm looking at people. And many of the people I see have their hands on their face. As a word of warning, I, I'm concerned, but anyhow.
Some would say hopeful.
Just got it, Sally.
I, I, just be careful. But you know how I feel strongly that we only need one garbage pickup? And I think it has changed since we've had the separate day for recycling. And people are more conscientious about recycling, so the bottles and the cans and the papers don't go with the garbage. And it's really changed, I mean, I know I'm one person, but often there are more people here. And really, even if we have to store our garbage for a little bit, we can do it. And I think that is one way we really should sacrifice. The other thing about the roads, the roads are in good shape. I think I would be very willing to have them have a few potholes. Some of the houses, I think, Maureen, in a way, you're right about people look at the way. The whole community presents itself when they're looking at real estate. And I'm just thinking of some of the most wonderful castle-type homes I know in other places, which are up dirt roads. So, you know, that's not necessarily so, but it is one point. But anyhow, I just hope we can make some meaningful cuts. I do think we should maybe not accelerate the personnel raises because I don't think this is a time to do that. And I hope, I'm sure you can do it, I believe you can do it, thank you.
Thank you, Sally. John, who's next?
Guazzoni.
Claude.
Yo.
Can we turn off Chauncey's mic, please, I know she likes to talk, but let's turn her off and put a Claudio's on.
Yes, he.
Claudio? Claudio? He might have left.
No, he's here, I think he's having trouble with audio, he's unmuted, but.
I also think.
Well, there he is, Claudio, we cannot hear you. Oh, that's a bummer.
John, I think you missed Walter Dean as well, I think he said he had a question to ask.
No, we're going in order from John.
Yeah, no, I know.
Claudio, we could not hear you, can you make sure your mic's working? Now it's muted. His, his mic is muted now, can we, all right, that's unmuted. Hello?
Can you hear me now?
Yes, sir, thank you.
Great, uh, thanks, Mac. I think we're moving into a need-to-have versus nice-to-have world. Where we know we have to be a little careful about our level of consumption. There are three levels of roads in the park, for a primary road, secondary, tertiary roads. I live on a tertiary road. I think it's very important the primary roads be kept top-notch for the real estate agents and for the real estate prices. So the primary arteries going in and out of the village should probably be kept top-notch. Those secondary and tertiary roads like mine, you know, I don't think we mind if there's an extra pothole in there for a year or two. So, you know, just, just my two bits here.
Thank you, I think those are good points, John, who do you have next?
Omar.
Was it Dean or Omar?
I have a list of Omar, Kimberly and then Walter Dean.
Okay, Omar?
Yeah, hi, okay, I just wanted to piggyback on what was just said about, yeah, I think all expenditures should be needs-based. And as it pertains to garbage, maybe there'd be some way to work out with the actual garbage, if the municipality, if there's a garbage, that it's seasonal. For example, in the summer, you may not want to have food sitting in the garbage for a week. I know that where I live now, we currently have garbage pickup once a week and on very hot and humid days, within two days, you got maggots. You got all kinds of stuff growing because, again, it's hot, it's humid and that, you know, may lead to growth of, you know, microorganisms and all that. So I think maybe we should just look at it maybe on a seasonal basis. Wintertime, maybe we can do it once a week, summer, twice. But I don't know if that would make a difference in the price at all.
Oh, I, it might, that's a good point, I think we should look into that. Okay, who's next?
Kimberly. Freeland?
I can't understand the name.
I don't have anything to say.
Oh, Kimberly again, oh, okay, you're good?
Yeah, I'm good.
Okay, we will mute you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Last but not least is Walter Dean.
Hey, Walter.
I, whoops, apparently I've been muted and unmuted. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you all again for conducting this meeting, thanks to the staff of Tuxedo Park. Just one last idea for me is that I think there are thirteen building lots for sale in the park. Two of them are twenty-five acres, so maybe nineteen building lots. One way we can increase the revenue is if we get those lots sold and get people to buy on them and many, to build on them, excuse me. And many people feel that there are too many restrictions for building. And I think that maybe we should work on streamlining the, the procedures so that people can buy and build without so much difficulty. And that would be a way of increasing revenue and that's a lot of lots, nineteen. That's it, thank you again, and everybody stay safe and healthy.
Thank you, are we done, John?
I believe so.
Okay, so, Brian, we're going to keep this open or do you want us to close it?
That's up to the board, what I was talking about earlier, you know, you're talking about getting together for budget issues. But the public hearing could be continued to a later date or it could be closed. But, and you could just not vote on the adoption of the law until you're done with the budget process.
Right, and we shouldn't because we don't know if we're going to be under or over, and you had mentioned the twenty-ninth?
Well, that's up to the board, I mean, if you think, you know, for, for continuing the public hearing, you know, and allowing people to speak, you may want to do it sooner than that. So you can get that feedback and then that same night, you could adopt or do what you want to do.
So if we're, okay, appreciate that, so if the board is going to organize a list of potential cuts, present them to the public. That would, I mean, maybe Wednesday, next Wednesday would be a week from today, would be a good opportunity to continue the public hearing. Trustees?
What day are you suggesting and time?
I'm suggesting a week from Wednesday. That will give people the time to digest the list we'll make on Friday. And then we can reopen, you know, we can go through Wednesday and, and close. And if we're over, we would have to then go into the local law one. If not, we could final, we could accept it as a final budget if we're under the cap. So how does next Wednesday sound for that?
Eight AM, fine with me.
Nine fifteen?
I can't, there's a planning board meeting, village planning board meeting next Wednesday.
Can you skip it?
So maybe Tuesday or Thursday?
Thursday, Tuesday or Thursday works for me. Maureen?
I'm sorry, Tuesday or Thursday, Thursday does not work for me, so Tuesday would be Tuesday or Wednesday, fine.
Mr. McHugh? You're off.
That's fine by me.
Okay, trustee Barnett? Okay, so Tuesday at nine o'clock. Is that acceptable?
Yep.
All right, great.
Can we, can we be consistent and just make all the meetings nine or nine thirty, not, not cherry pick nine or nine thirty, just?
If that will make you happy, yes, we can do that. How about?
Few things do what that would.
Yeah, how about nine o'clock?
Fine with me.
Okay, nine o'clock. Um, all right, so we, uh, are keeping this open, and we're going to keep it open until, um, Friday. Oh, until potentially through Wednesday, right? So, um, I move that we, uh, keep the hearing for local law introductory one of 220 tax cap levy limit, uh, open until Wednesday.
No, it's Tuesday, Mayor.
Oh, thank you very much. Tuesday.
April 21st, nine AM.
Okay, April 21st, nine AM. Uh, may I have a second? Hello?
Second.
Okay, all, any discussion?
Sorry.
Yes, Paul?
So just, just when you see the things, how they all fit together. So the idea is to develop a list which we could have on Friday, right? It will get distributed or publicized in some way. It just gives people Saturday, Sunday.
Monday.
And I'm just raising the question, do we think that's enough time?
I prefer Thursday, but, you know, it, it may or may not be. I don't think everyone could do Thursday, is that right?
I cannot.
Or Tuesday? In the evening, seven?
Tuesday evening is better, seven o'clock.
I could do Thursday evening as well. I'm sorry, I'm free after 1:30 of another board meeting.
Alan, how about you? Trustee McQ.
Prefer mornings, but that's just me.
Okay, you could do a seven? That's probably sunset time down in Florida. I don't blame you.
Yeah.
All right, so let's schedule it, Paul, for, um, Tuesday at 7:00 PM, all right? Okay, so, uh, I move that we, uh, keep the public hearing open, uh, for local law introduction one of 220 tax cap levy limit through 7:00 PM, well, through, um, let's just say up to, uh, just say, let's just say on that day, because maybe it'll go to 10:00 at night. Until August 2nd, Tuesday, at, at 7:00 PM in the evening. May I have a second?
Second.
I think you just said August, April 21st at 7:00 PM.
No, actually, I slurred it on purpose. And so hopefully it didn't sound like August. All right, so, uh, April, and is there any discussion? All in favor? I, I think that's a good idea, guys. I think we did the right thing. Because we'll be able to put this out to the public. I think those were great suggestions. All right, so, um, moving on. We can now, uh, go in, continue with our regular meeting. And, uh, we can start, uh, with the departmental reports. And we start with the police. If someone could turn on, uh, the chief's mic. And it might be, uh, Dave Conklin. It might be listed as Dave Conklin?
Yes.
Chief, do we have you?
Yeah, can you hear me?
Yes, absolutely. Okay, so would you like to give the monthly report?
Sure. So, um, we had 170 noncriminal calls for service and three criminal calls for service. We had zero motor vehicle accidents. We issued seven, um, traffic tickets. Issued one warning. There were two fires, including automatic alarms. We had one alarm call, two medical calls. We assisted the town of Tuxedo Police Department two times. We assisted other police agencies three times. We had one report of shots fired, which turned out to be in the town. We patrolled 2,092 miles. And 1,300 vehicles, approximately 1,300 vehicles, um, came through the gate.
Terrific, thank you. Can we, uh, turn on Jeff Voss's mic, please, for the DPW report?
Yeah, Jeff, Jeff's not on just for the simple fact that Jeff's working seven days a week right now because, uh, as a result of what's going on, we've got him running the sewer plant exclusively. So, uh, a lot of the work right now has been, uh, cleaning up the side roads and everything, so he's been brush cutting along the front gate. I think a lot of people have noticed that. Up on Camp Comfort Road, we're starting to get, uh, starting to do catch basin repairs around the village. He's doing one on Tux, uh, Tower Hill Road right now, and he is starting to sweep the village roads. Uh, I just spoke to him, uh, with regard to Politoche's request. Uh, it seemed entirely reasonable. And what we're going to do is defer doing hydrant flushing and, uh, do that. We'll reappraise it and we'll do an announcement when we're prepared to do it, once we've got greater clarity with regard to number of residents in household, et cetera. So that, that, that is being punted in the short term.
Right, and that's, that's his report, essentially. So thank you very much.
Yeah.
Building and capital, uh, can we turn on John Leonard's mic, please?
Good evening, everyone. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yep. Yes, we've had, uh, four certificate of occupancy requests during the month of April, uh, the Som property on Tower Hill Road, the Yaski property on Westlake Road, and the Babbage House on Turtle Point Road. Uh, there were no stop work orders issued during the month of April. There were four violation letters that were sent out. Uh, we did receive responses for, I believe, two of them. Uh, the other two I will be following up on. Um, I have had some success with the property located at 456 Westlake Road, which has been problematic for several years. Uh, the bank has hired a contractor to start to address a number of deferred maintenance issues. And I'll be doing a Pablock inspection next Wednesday or Thursday with the contractor. Uh, we have a number of projects that are underway, uh, the Pulver renovation on Continental Road, the McGrath, addition and house rebuild on Brook Farm Road. Also, Orange and Rotland has made a significant amount of progress with their utility upgrades. As of late last week, they've installed approximately 50 of the anticipated 100 utility poles that are part of their upgrade project for this spring into the summer. The Friedman property, um, there's some progress there with the addition that they're doing. The Hurley property, um, violation has been resolved after extended efforts through the village courts and working with the property owner and his contractor, uh, they finally resolved that longstanding violation. I've also met with a company under the name of Tilson regarding possible locations for cell tower access in the village that would improve cell reception, uh, throughout the entire village and likely beyond the village. So I'm looking forward to getting a report back from Tilson, uh, within the next month or so. Also, projects under review, um, we have a McGrath, uh, who's proposing to do some changes to a pond behind their house. The McLennan property, who's looking to add some skylights and irrigation well. The Madden property adding a flotation, a floating dock, and the Overton property are requesting a permit extension. Regarding capital improvements, uh, last month, we finalized the cleaning and inspection of the Potucket Road water storage tanks. I'm glad to report there were no significant issues. Uh, we are going to get a full written report from the company that did that work. Fortunately, um, the inside of the tanks was in good shape. They were, uh, drained, cleaned, sterilized, and refilled without any, uh, loss of service to the people in the area of Potucket Road. So that's a, a big success and, uh, long overdue project that's now. Other projects I've been involved with, uh, we finalized the assessment role the beginning of April. Uh, we drafted some responses to the DEC regarding some of their concerns. Um, I've obtained some pricing regarding some fencing at the South Gate House. I completed a form for the Water Department regarding their water withdrawal report. I've obtained some prices for replacing the roof at the water storage tanks on Potucket Road. And I've also gotten some estimates and some advice on what we should do with the, the roof that's leaking at the keep part of the police department. That is all I have at this point.
Wow, that's, that's great, especially these ridiculously long projects that you finally were able to conclude. Uh, thank you, John.
You're welcome.
I'm, uh, going to ask the village attorney, Brian Nugent, to give us a litigation report, please.
Mayor, I could step in for Brian here. Um, the litigation report is basically, a lot of the courts right now are, are closed, are doing things remotely only if they're emergency or essential, so there's really nothing new on the three litigations that we reported on last month. Those, those cases were entitled Miller versus the Village, Madden versus the Village, and Yaknowitz versus Tabak in the Village. Those are still pending, um, and as the courts start to open back up, we expect those matters to start to come to light. So maybe we'll have more of an update on them next month, but right now, there's really nothing new.
Thank you, John. Uh, let's move on to agenda nine, trustee reports. Would any trustee like to give a report?
I have one.
Mr. Burnett?
I met with the, uh, the chief, uh, just talking about how the, uh, police department could be kept safer and, and the, and do its job more efficiently in the, uh, environment, uh, we're in now. The chief has done a commendable job. He got, he looked at this early March, well before it was really getting a national attention. Came out with several, uh, statements and directives, and finally, uh, a more comprehensive one in the middle of March. Issues regarding keep and, and, and the, uh, and the booth, uh, I think are complex issues and, and we're looking at it further. So I'll probably be reporting that in the next two or three meetings. But I want to commend the chief right now for what he's doing.
Thank you very much. Chief, congratulations. Okay, so any other trustee reports? Maureen?
Nothing to report.
trustee McQ? Microphone?
Sorry about that. I've got a laundry list of capital items. Do you want to take care of them now, or do you want to, do you have that somewhere different on the agenda date?
These are capital items that we've been discussing in our, uh, meetings?
Correct.
Okay, um, how long do you think it will be?
I can make it as short as you would like.
Whatever, okay. Why don't you just take the floor and, and take your time?
All right, um, first one we'll do is, I, I forwarded to everybody with regard to finishing Continental Road paving. Jeff met with the contractor who was at the Orange County Department of Public Works bid, and, uh, we got a quote for finishing that off. Originally, we were planning to do that in the fall and November, then inclement, uh, weather precluded us from doing that, so we have not done that. So that is one item. Uh, it's within budget, uh, or it's within, uh, the line item Jeff has for road paving. So, uh, I will be asking for permission there. Uh, the second thing is with regard to three different pumps. Uh, one's the clarifier at the sewer pump, uh, or the sewer station. We've had consistent problems with the, the nozzle and the pumps getting, uh, broken and clogged. As a result, we're wanting to get a new grinder system and have that installed at the sewer plant. We got three prices, the range of prices was $9800 up to $10,500. The current pump, uh, which is the one that is not working well, is in excess of 20 years old. The two other pumps are also with regard to sewer pumps. One's at Turtle Point, uh, pumping station. If you recall, around six months ago, we replaced one pump. What's come to light is, uh, and this gets back to an issue that is true and dear to all our hearts, is this deferred capital maintenance. Uh, the redundant pump is inoperable, so we do need to take care of it. The, with regard to pricing on that pump, the pricing came in, the three bids were between $6,466 and $7,450. And then the last was the water, uh, at the water plant, we have one additional sewer pump stationed there. And that is yet again the same situation where one pump is operable, the redundant pump, uh, pump is not operable. And the pricing on there was between 9841 and 10,500. So, uh, what I'm proposing is that, uh, we source the two pumps and one clarifier, all from the lowest bidder, uh, which is Fleet. In addition to that, we'll need an appropriation of a not-to-exceed with regard to electrical. Historically, we've used NATE with regard to this stuff for the electrical installation with regard to that. And, uh, this is all within our, a budget. We will be changing appropriation lines there. And Debbie did afford to everybody, uh, the board resolutions with regard to that. So tho- those are my comments with regard to, uh, capital items, which are real, really just deferred maintenance and improvements of our infrastructure. Uh, so, uh, those are my comments with regard to that.
Okay, thank you very much. Very clear. Just one thing, you said Continental Road, did you mean Clubhouse Road? For the paving?
Sorry, I, I meant clubhouse. Did I say Continental?
Yeah, you, whatever it was, you didn't say clubhouse, but no big deal. And then, just to clarify for the people, uh, watching, when you say it's allocated or it's in the budget, whatever, you're talking about the current budget, not the one we've been discussing tonight for 2020 more?
That is correct.
Okay, good. Uh, trustee Gluck, do you have any reports?
Other than Lakes Management, no.
All right, well, then we're going into that next. Okay, thank you. Uh, our next discussion is on Lakes Management, and who would like to take the floor on that?
I guess I will to start.
All right, thank you.
But I'm sure we'll all be pitching in. So, uh, at our last meeting, um, for those who were not present there, we laid out our, um, Lakes Managers' recommendations for treatment on our three lakes with respect to, uh, aquatic plants, essentially, uh, water milfoil. To review that briefly, um, the Lakes Manager, um, who spent a good part of this year, um, assessing the conditions of the lakes, testing and, um, and taking a real hard, and doing a number of surveys of aquatic, um, plants management, produced a, produced a report. The report recommended with respect to, um, water milfoil on Tuxedo Lake, um, the use of a herbicide, Procellicor. The, like, the consultant felt that the, uh, milfoil at, um, Tuxedo Lake was, uh, far too extensive in order to be managed, um, practically by, um, by, um, dash harvesting. With respect to pond number three, um, near as recommendation was either, um, Procellicor herbicide or, or dash, um, or a combination of the two. And with respect to, uh, um, Weewa, um, the consultant recommended a, uh, a number of days of, um, dash harvesting, it being more appropriate for, uh, the Weewa because of its, um, widely sort of dispersed, um, growth pattern. Um, so that was the, that was the recommendation, and the board, um, asked us to, uh, go back to the, um, Lakes Committee for their, for their input on these recommendations. The Lakes Committee held a conference call with, um, with, uh, the Lakes Consultant and myself, um, and went through the recommendations and had a fair amount of questioning and comments and back and forth. And, um, they, uh, the summary of their discussions, I think, was distributed to the board. And they, the summary of their discussions, I think, was distributed to the board the last, last couple of days. I'd be happy to, if you'd like, defer to Jim, he could summarize that for, for the board and the people present, and then we can continue.
Paul, just explain for the audience what Dash is, please.
Dash is, there, there are a number of different ways to deal with aquatic plants. You can, you can harvest them, sort of just mill them with a machine that just rips them up and takes them out. That's not appropriate for the type of growth we have on Tuxedo Lake because that regenerates from, leaves the, leaves the root there and just regrows. Dash stands for diver assisted suctioned harvesting where the, where divers actually go into the water, remove the root ball and the plant directly into a suction hose and take that and dispose of that on land. It's a, it's a, it's a process that can, a boat can do about a quarter to a half acre a day. And it costs about two, twenty-five hundred dollars a day, you know, for that kind of process. So that is one of the contributing factors to Dash being a, a not a practical solution for Tuxedo Lake, given the approximately forty acres of milfoil coverage there is per the, per the consultant's opinion.
All right, thanks. Alan's not there, so I'll just make my, Alan, you're back. Do you have anything to add to what trustee Gluck just said?
No, I, I think that's a fair summary. We did receive the water quality report that Paul has forwarded to the Lakes Committee for their review too. And, you know, there was nothing, nothing too dramatic there. There were some action items and recommendations, but, you know, with regard to pond number three, I think it's twenty-twenty-one action item with regard to Tuxedo Lake, we're going to have to do a deeper dive with regard to the intake valve for the water treatment plant.
Okay, thank you, Alan. So I just wanted to comment, I have a few paragraphs, I'll try and get through it quickly. I have a different view of how to deal with the milfoil than some of the trustees potentially. As everyone knows, this Eurasian milfoil is just, it damages the lake ecosystems. It's been around and growing for five, seven, eight, I don't know how many years because we haven't done anything but the Dash, which hasn't really made a full impact. And our Lake Managers have recommended, in addition to Dash, using a product called Priscillacor, which is a herbicide. And it specifically works for bodies of water where there is drinking, a reservoir, for example. And has been used in that capacity. Priscillacor is one of the newer herbicides out there. It has been approved for nationwide use, I think, what, two or three, two or three years ago, we can, we can come back to that. And it does the best treatment of killing milfoil. You know, so it's potent, but it's safe. It has EPA approval, state approval, D E C approval. And they used it and have been using it in the Croton Watershed, which supplies New York City some portion of New York City's drinking water. They were attacking Hydralisk, which is different than milfoil, but it's also an invasive species of plant that hurts the ecosystem. In addition, the EPA gave Priscillacor a reduced risk classification, which signifies reduced risk to our health and water supply. Now, as I mentioned, a counterargument for using Priscillacor is that it's relatively new. And I do believe that that's a subjective point, though. It has been used significantly since it was approved. Now, one of the, one of the issues that the board has been grappling with, as well as the Lakes Committee, is, you know, to just start dumping chemicals into the reservoir could be controversial. So I know it's not amongst the lakefront property owners. I've surveyed them and they're all for it. I know that that's the case pond three as well. The lake owner, the lakefront owners feel that, I mean, they want the treatment yesterday. It's dangerous to swim in and you swim in pond three. You know, it's something I think we should do in the, in the Tuxedo Lake this year. And I think we should do as a compromise, just small portions of Tuxedo Lake, for example, potentially at the south end, both the club boating house and the village boating club. And see what happens. And in doing so, I think we should go out fairly quickly and let people know what we may do with this chemical and get some feedback and see what we're up against in terms of community buy-in. Everyone might be totally gung ho, or maybe it's going to be a fight for five years. But I think we should, we might as well start that process and know. So my last comment is, as a resident who loves fishing, I have been doing it for three weeks now, and it is a world of difference. It's night and day, there's no milfoil showing yet. And we're back to fishing the best fishing holes that we used to fish between nineteen ninety-five and when this milfoil started to appear. And it just seems to me that it would, the recreation on the Tuxedo Lake would just improve so much. And we haven't done anything over the years except some Dash. I'd really push to get that done. So as I said, the compromise is to do pond three with Priscillacor and portions of Tuxedo Lake with Priscillacor. And if we get good results, we can do the whole thing next year. So that's what I wanted to say about my position on the lakes and their treatments. Any more comments from the trustees?
Yes, so I
All of Gluck.
I would, I have a view, but I think I'd like to ask Jim, if he wants to, to present the input that the trustees and mayor asked for at our last meeting on, on the Lakes Committee view. And then I would be happy to supplement that with my view, which is a little bit different. And I'm sure other trustees will have a view as well, as well as potentially members of the audience.
Thank you. Jim, would you like us to open your mic?
Can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
You can. Okay, good. Well, let me just try and make it brief. We did have a long meeting with the Lake Manager and we recommended the Lake Manager to you. And basically, many of us on the committee support the recommendations of the Lake Manager. He is in fact a person who has, I think, considerable knowledge and competence. Now, we, we had discussions with him. Let's start with Weewa. And we'll work to the more controversial Tuxedo Lake and Pond Three. But in Weewa, we are very concerned that although the milfoil now is scattered, as Alan mentioned and Paul mentioned, there's the potential there for Weewa to be clogged in a few years if fairly aggressive action is not taken. The Lake Manager originally recommended at least five days of Dash harvesting in the lake. Under, in Weewa, under, after discussions with him, he suggested, or he agreed, or, or, or he, he said that he thought nine days in Weewa would be better. Five days earlier in the season and then to go back later in the season and do another four days to pick up anything that had been missed or had regrown. He, he also thought a couple of days of Dash harvesting for the Coontail, which is also very, has been very extensive in Weewa. When you come to Pond Three, the Lake Manager recommended Priscillacor and/or Dash harvesting, as, as Paul mentioned. The committee is divided on the use of Priscillacor. Four members of the committee supported the Lake Manager's recommendation, the other four did not. And, but, so basically Dash harvesting was proposed by the Lake Manager for the stream that flows from Tuxedo Lake into Pond Three, as well as for the southern part of Pond Three, which is very shallow. And then use Priscillacor on the rest of the lake. Half the Lake Committee thought that was a good idea. The other half agreed with the Dash harvesting, were against the use of Priscillacor. Now, this division in the Lake Committee is unfortunate, but I think you're probably going to find a similar division in the community. Coming to Tuxedo Lake, again, the committee was divided there on the use of Priscillacor. The, the Lake Manager suggested testing, which is using Priscillacor on portions of Tuxedo Lake, which is similar to what the mayor was advocating, to be followed by whole lake treatment, that is, to cover Priscillacor around the whole lake. There may be a time problem with this because the evaluation of the test may take some time and it may not be feasible to do the whole lake as well. So that's, that's basically where, where we stood on this and on this particular subject that you're discussing now.
Well, I want to thank you, you and the committee. You've done a great job, done a lot of hard work, and we appreciate it. Thank you, Jim.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Do we have any other committee reports?
Mayor?
Yes, trustee Gluck.
Sure, so, so just a couple of thoughts there and a couple of pricing items because our Lakes Management Plan obviously is tied into our budget for next year as well. So in terms of the, in terms of the, the budget impact as compared to the budgets that were currently have in front of us, using using Priscillacor on Pond Number Three would be a price of about fourteen thousand dollars. That's, that's built into that budget. Doing Dash harvesting on Pond Number Three would be about an additional fourteen thousand dollars. So we would have to budget additional money in order to do that. I, I, I am inclined to recommend Priscillacor in Pond Three, based not so much on the financial considerations, but also I believe our Lakes Manager believes that it is more effective. Although either could be used, Priscillacor would be a more effective treatment option for Pond Three. It would also, using that herbicide in Pond Number Three initially. But let me, let me back up for a second. One thing that has been apparent to me from reading a fair amount of, of other communities' experiences with lakes and herbicide treatment in lakes is that you are much better off getting community education and getting community buy-in. And I just don't think there is enough time to do that for a, for, in terms of treating Tuxedo Lake. It's, you know, in the, in the Croton reservoirs where they, they used, I think they used Floridone initially. It was, it was a multi-year effort that was put on in order to get people educated, get people comfortable. And at the end of the day, you know, it's possible that people may not be comfortable with that in our drinking water. We may have to do some other option. I mean, doing nothing is in one sense an option also, although not, you know, not one that is very good for the health of our lakes. So, so my recommendation would be to defer herbicide treatment in Tuxedo Lake till next year. Our Lakes Manager has said that that is not a, it's, it's not likely to get materially worse than it is now. It's about as bad as it can get. And this will give us an opportunity to do this with, with additional support, you know, in the community.
Yeah, I absolutely agree with you on community buy-in. And I know the study you referred to, it was a huge effort to get community buy-in. We have a much smaller number of people involved. But I do agree, I thought maybe we could just do an initial poking around now with everybody on the water system and say it's something we're considering. And if it all comes back positive, maybe we can do it this year. If it comes back negative, obviously, we're going to have to go into a situation where we're educating to get community buy-in. And that, again, would delay, would delay it a year, you're saying. So my suggestion is to send something out very shortly. So if there's no opposition, we could reconsider what we're going to use Priscillacor on, which lake and how. And if the trustees don't object, I can write something up and then send it to you guys and see what you think, just to get out there and feel around a little bit. What do you think?
Okay, so I, first of all
One other factor, if I could finish it.
Trustee Gluck.
We're also very close to the end of any window in which we can, you know, effectively move forward this year, you know, with, with permitting, as well as scheduling, you know, Dash, the areas that we might be doing Dash on. The, you know, our preferred vendor has been pretty good about keeping us keeping some time aside for us. I don't know how much longer, you know, we can, we can count on that. And, you know, the window in which we can get permitting at the D E C is probably getting fairly close as well.
So
Okay, thank you, trustee Gluck. How about trustee Cohen? You look like you have something to say?
Sorry, yeah, it's like, I don't want to use the chat and I don't, I tried to raise my hand, so I don't know how to communicate without talking over someone. So I apologize. But Paul, to your point, and in the spirit of the previous discussion, which is what should be on the chopping block? Is there a place, because I, I'd like to know the cost benefit analysis, right? You've given us the cost in terms of financial, dollar amount of cost that could reduce the budget. Where is the, and you say it's bad for our, our lakes' water quality, I think it was. And I've heard, and not anecdotal, but information here and there about the actual impact of E W M on, on, you know, obviously recreational fishing and all that clearly, but the water quality. Is there something you could direct us to, to, to lay out if, you know, what happens if we don't, if we don't take care of this problem this year?
Well, well, we've asked, we've asked the Lake Manager that because, you know, frankly, I mean, I'm not a Fisher person. So it wouldn't bother me tremendously if, if there were, you know, two feet of weeds around the edge of the lake everywhere. So I said, so the person I would, I would refer you to is our Lakes Manager. And we can set up that conversation, but his, his answer to Alan and I was that it is, it has a long-term negative effect on the ecological health of the lake because it crowds out other species, it crowds out other plants, it changes the ecology of the areas where, you know, where the fish spawn. And it's, you know, it's, it's damaging in that respect.
Okay.
Thanks, Paul. So do you think you could deliver some information to Maureen and the board that goes into more detail?
Sure.
In terms of damages and timeframe? The, it sounds to me like the Lakes Manager said there won't really be an issue if we go another year. Originally. In other words, we leave the milfoil and it's not going to grow that much more over the next year, if we have to go to next year. Trustee McQ, do you have anything you'd like to add?
Yeah, I mean, I would, you know, obviously Paul, Paul and I have been intimately involved, A, on this and with discussions with Jim. I, yeah, with regard to Pond Number Three, I do support Paul's position and completely agree that we should use Priscillacor exclusively and not Dash harvesting on that. With regard to the Weewa, you know, we, when we drained the lake in order to do the dam repair, that actually was a windfall for us with regard to eliminating a lot of Eurasian water milfoil. The last thing we want to do is let that reestablish itself and become what Tuxedo Lake has become. So I think we have to be very diligent. So I think we have to be very diligent in that regard on staying on top of whatever growth we see and removing that. The one thing that hasn't been in this discussion yet and is that we're going to be putting barrier curtains between Tuxedo Lake and Pond Three and Pond Three and the Weewa, so we can minimize fragmentation coming from the main lake to Pond Three and the Weewa, which we all recognize and the lakes manager certainly emphasized is very important. So that's something else. My concern with regard to doing Tuxedo Lake, I would prefer to use Pond Three as our base case. I'm worried about the financial implications and what we just heard for the last two hours is people don't want higher taxes. And there is trade-offs. And we have to, you know, I have no problem laying it out. You know what? We've allocated $150,000 with regard to the lakes in our budget. Hundreds in the water, 50K comes out of the general budget. So the 50K specifically is with regard to Pond Number Three and the Weewa. The 100K is with regard to water quality issues. And I want to make sure we define them as not fishing issues, but water quality issues because it's the water department where this is going, being funded. And it's a far broader group of people than just 300 odd residents in Tuxedo Park. We have 702 customers, so we have to be cognizant of that issue.
Yeah, thank you. I think you make a great point, but just to defend fishermen, fish are also, the health of fish are also affected by the growth of mill foil. And so it's hard to separate them. Plus, the village chips in, what, three, four grand a year to stock the lake? And we, as a partner with the club, they put in the same amount of money. So it's not, I mean, it's something we should consider. However, you know, we do have to make sacrifices, Alan. And if we have to let the mill foil on the main lake go another year, we should probably do it.
Could I make a comment about Pond Three?
Absolutely, Jim.
Just a quick note. When 24D was used there a couple of years ago, it was not very effective in the southern end because the southern end is shallow and the currents produced by the inlet from Tuxedo Lake seemed to disperse the herbicide. So the lake manager did recommend dash pulling in the southern end that's very shallow, where it's hard to get divers, or hard, well, forget the divers, but it's hard to just let them wade in and hand pull there and hand pull in the stream to free the stream up, the stream from Tuxedo Lake.
That makes sense. Let me propose something. Oh, I'm sorry, Jim, please proceed.
Okay.
Are you finished, Jim?
I am, yes.
I'm sorry you interrupted. All right, so let me propose this for you guys to kick around. Let's tonight lay out what we think is best, and we agree on it, and we vote. And then we can proceed. And Alan, you can back that into our budget. Does that make sense to anybody?
Sorry, whether we want to vote on pricelacor or dash harvesting?
Well, yeah, I mean, we have the three lakes. We're dealing with one year. We've heard all the different options. And I think we sort of take Jim's lead on what we're going to do in each body of water. And then let's let's approve it. So, you know, we have a direction moving forward. And then I'd like Alan McHugh, though, to back into Alan's analysis of the budget, how that would affect the budget. Is that something everyone would like to at least discuss here? Alan, we can't hear you.
Sorry, I take umbrage because first and foremost is it's not the lakes committee's recommendation. It's the lake. It's we hired a professional consultant to give us recommendations. And a lot of the last two years has been getting different constituents within the park comfortable with our lakes manager because there was issues with regard to solitude and the perception that they were giving biased advice. So, you know, to Jim's credit, Jim spent an enormous amount of time working and coming out with alternatives with regard to lakes managers. And I think we've hit on somebody who's sympathetic to the different constituents, listens and gives a really sound advice. So I think it's important that the recommendations is coming from a professional lakes manager, not a lake group. That's point number one. Point number two is, I'm, I don't think we, you know, we can bounce this around. We've obviously got the water quality report we just received, and there could be some action items there. So I don't think it's prudent for us to poll each board member on which way we should go, because I'm not sure most board members, one, have seen or read the water quality report. And secondly, you know, we need to frame everyone with regard to dollars and cents. And, you know, that goes back to whether or not we want to be under budget or over budget for the fiscal year and exceed the tax gap.
Thank you. I just don't, I don't want to go, I don't want to, if we're going to do pricelacor in Pond Three, you know, there is this deadline with getting the DEC and also the weather. How about I just throw this out? In the Weewa, we only poll with dash. And we can do that right away. Pond Three, we use pricelacor except on the south or north, I forget which end, and we use dash there. Okay, so it's a combination. In the main lake, we use dash only to clear in front of the club boathouse and the village boathouse. That's it. And as Alan said, what is that going to do cost-wise? And maybe we could all agree on that.
Oh, David?
Yes, sir.
So I think what you've laid out there, and to Alan's point, you know, let's start with the recommendations of our lakes manager in terms of what, in terms of what he's recommending we're doing. And of course, we have the ability to do more or less than that, but for good reason. So I think what you laid out is, is pretty much the recommendation of the lakes manager. He says you should have to do herbicide treatment sooner or later. You could wait a year and do it. But lakes manager did recommend Pond Three harvesting southern end. Rest of Pond Three, a pricelacor treatment. Weewa pulling, there's some question about the number of additional days of pulling or not. I think he, you know, his recommendation was five days.
I think it was five and then followed up by four.
Well, he said if you, funds permitting, if you had extra funds, you could, the four would be better. So that's, you know, better, better is, is better, but the baseline recommendation is five. So maybe we could, we could budget for another couple of days. That could be used either for pulling or for coon tail if necessary. You know, if it's not used for pulling at the end of the season. I think it, I personally think it makes sense to have another visit in fall on the Weewa and clean that up, you know, if we can, if we can find another, you know, $5,000 or $8,000 to do that. That comes out of the general budget, not out of the water budget. So what I'm saying, I think, is yes, you know, what you laid out there is essentially what the lakes manager is recommending. And, and what I think Alan and I are looking for is not so much necessarily a vote, but a direction from the board to go out, let's follow up with our vendors. Let's get the contracts in place. Let's make sure we get the permitting in place. Maybe authorize the necessary permitting today so that we have the authority to go out and tell solitude to, you know, get those permits. And then
Yeah, true. Are you, I'm sorry, are you finished?
And when it comes time to approve the contracts, we'll have
Right.
on that.
I agree with you just, with you. I think that's, that's a good way to go. We don't even need a resolution even to go ahead and get the permits. So shall we leave it to trustee Gluck and trustee McHugh to start doing the pricing based on what the lakes manager suggested, which happened to be similar to what I suggested? And then if we can put it together then, no resolution required.
Yeah, I mean, that's fine by me. I don't support your conclusions, and I think there's variations. But with regard to getting permitting, you know, it's, I think with regard to Pond Number Three, it's straightforward. Are you saying that you're happy to defer getting permitting for Tuxedo Lake? I'm not sure I heard that.
Yes, what I'm suggesting now is that we don't do Tuxedo Lake. Other than dash in front of both marinas, if you will.
Right. And my, my personal concern about dash in Tuxedo Lake is we've done it the last couple of years. It's been exercise in futility.
Yeah.
So why, why use good taxpayer dollars after bad? If it's not going to get that much worse, just recognize it for what it is and then formulate a strategy for the following year, which can better deal with it. That's my personal opinion, but I could be a minority there.
Do you, would you be willing to just drop a little pricelacor in front of both marinas? See what happens?
I contemplated it, but the vendor didn't really recommend it and didn't think the results would be that great because of fragmentation. So yet again, it would be a case of squandering money and not really getting a good data set. So why do it?
All right, so I mean, basically, we leave Tuxedo Lake alone and let the mill foil be the mill foil. Because as you said, dash was questionable, and we were still running through mill foil at both marinas, if you will. So, yeah, I'm willing to defer all that. I think, why don't you guys run with a plan and price it up? And then, I mean, it sounds like we're ready to move forward. I'm sure it's going to be within budget. And we all have a similar view. We don't have to have the, you know, everyone could compromise. I told you what I'd like. You guys can add what you'd like, and I'll defer to you. Is that something you would want to go with?
Fine by me, Paul.
Yes.
Trustee Barnett, do you have any comments?
No, I agree totally with Paul and Alan.
What about me?
What's that?
What about me? You don't, you agree with them and not me?
Kind of 75%.
Okay, all right, so we're ready to move on.
Well, can I just make a comment? This is what I'm confused about. Regardless if it's in budget or not, I mean, we are talking about putting things on the chopping block that are going to be painful. So I think that this, regardless if it's in the budget currently, that should be something on the chopping block. We, to eliminate from the budget. So maybe I'm missing
Yeah, absolutely. I agree 100%. I think that, I think Alan is going to be backing it into the, to the budget for us and giving us some ideas.
I think that's the purpose of Friday, actually.
Agreed.
Yeah, absolutely.
We can define a better matrix to give a couple of different iterations that we can discuss on Friday.
Perfect.
Terrific. Okay, do we have anyone here from the town to give a report? Is Michelle Lindsay available? Okay, so we will move to the public comment section.
David?
Yes, sir.
I will, I will just pass on one thing that I think Michelle would probably want mentioned tonight from the town meeting on Monday. And that is that there is a public hearing on WebEx for the Town Village Consolidation Plan that's being held on April 27. Sign-in information for that is available on the town website. So that's April 27, public hearing on the Town Village Consolidation.
Terrific. Thank you for bringing that to our attention. Now, we're available to do a public comment session on what we've been discussing in the regular agenda. If there's anyone interested in making a comment, please let us know in the chat box. And John will help us get you on the mic.
And anyone that might be interested can electronically raise their hand in the, on their, their screen, too.
Oh, the little hand icon?
Yes, so
Oh, great, okay.
Bill Bort.
I don't see the hand.
Would you like to speak, though?
Yeah, I would just like to say one thing about dash in Tuxedo Lake. Yes, last year, the results were not what everyone would have liked. Not much time was given to them, and there were boats in the piers, which did seem to, what the divers said, did interfere with the work they were doing. I don't know, it's, of course, your decision. But if people are going to be using the lake from those two boathouses, the mill foil is going to be a problem if you don't do anything in front of those boathouses this year. So
Yeah, because they'll chop, the motors will chop up and spread it.
Also, they'll also complain about it. I mean, there'll be a lot, I think.
Okay, well, we'll take all those things into consideration. Any other raised hands?
Dave, Mayor?
Trustee Gluck.
So we took that experience to heart from last year. The Village Boat Club will be moving its boats if we do a dash exercise around that area. And I'm pretty sure the same arrangements can be made at the Tuxedo Club Boathouse, because I actually have somebody who works there.
Actually, there's no personnel there. It's closed.
Well, I don't think they'll be able to do this until, until personnel, you know.
Good point, because I don't know what happens if you social distance when you're scuba diving. All right.
Bill Bort raises his hand.
Who? Bill?
Bill.
Bill Bordenowski?
Yeah.
Turn him on.
Okay, he's unmuted.
He's not unmuted.
Was. Not sure.
Mayor, can you have
Now he's, now he's on.
Okay. Mayor trustees, I'd like to commend the board and trustees, you know, all their collective efforts and work they're doing to keep the village running really smoothly and efficiently. And most of all, and how you do it all on this very tight budget. That being said, I just wanted to raise a point to you about a serious dilemma that's facing us all in the village and the town right now. Nobody wants to talk about the coronavirus and how it's affecting the people. Right now, people are very worried, they're concerned, you know, they're in self-quarantine. And everybody's concerned about who they talk to, who they come in contact with, and they're afraid of catching this very serious strain. And right now, the community, I think, is looking up to the board, to you, our leaders, to maybe infuse them with a positive message of hope and inspiration to distract them from all this negative news we're seeing and hearing on TV. I just wanted to make a suggestion for your consideration. I know budget's tight right now, but let me throw something at you. If I could suggest to the board to consider, you know, you have this issue that came up with the new police booth, which from my understanding, it was already funded by donations and otherwise. And it was kind of just awaiting the final approval to get started. It's the first thing that people see when they come in the gate. You know, why not start the construction on this booth? It's a state-of-the-art police booth. And announce the project, you know, to the people to show them a little bit of a light at the end of the tunnel. It's, we're looking at a three-month project. It'll be done off-site, as you had indicated previously. And it can be performed in a very safe environment with minimal concerns about any viral contamination. And I don't perceive any more than two people working on the booth at any given time. And with safe distancing, it shouldn't have any effect, you know, on the workers there themselves. And also, it will not affect any of the police officers currently working at the station. And on top of that, you know, my understanding is it's already in full compliance with the village code, New York State law, federal law, and it's even approved and exempt under the Homeland Security Essentials guidelines. So it's one of these things that has already been even presented to the new chief of police, who has also given approval. So I would just ask the board to consider, think about maybe giving approval to the project. You could even start it May 1st. It would take three months. Right now, we're dealing with a low-traffic period because everything is shut down. And give the people some hope and inspiration to look at. You know, the president and the governors are already trying to restart the country. So why don't we try to start to reset things locally on our level? It's your decision to It's your decision to, uh, to make and to consider, and I said my piece. So thank you again for hearing me out, and everybody, uh, be safe and, and be well. God bless.
Thank you, Bill. Uh, we have a couple items on the booth, the last two items that need to be approved to move forward. And we'll see how that goes. So, any other hands up? John, no other hands up?
No, I don't see any other hands up, and I don't see any, um, people have noted in the chat, so.
Last call. Okay, very good, thank you. Alright, we'll start with old business. On the booth, uh, the budget, the revised budget was presented. And I would like to know if anyone has any comments on that.
I don't have any comments, looks fine to me.
It would require additional money. Because the S and B price was larger than Chet's price. So it does increase the budget, which would require more allocation from the, by several thousand dollars, from the uh, fund. Uh, also, uh, there's the potential that that could be raised privately. But knowing those things, I was wondering if you felt comfortable passing them, or if you wanted to have more discussion? I'll start with Trustee Gluck.
I'll, I'll, I'll start, so um, I was a, I was a, a no on the prior budget because of a firmly-held belief that I didn't think, among other things, that the booth should be supported by public taxpayer funds. Um, and so, for that reason, um, I continue to have that same view, and um, I would be a, you know, a no vote.
Thank you, just, just to address that. The funds that were raised for the booth do cover it. But we added redundant equipment for the keep that brought it over the budget of the money that was donated by residents. So I know it's a nuance, but maybe you'll consider that. Uh, Trustee Cone, would you care to comment?
Well, yeah, I'm confused by your budget, because I, I saw it as, uh, the last budget that I had, that I thought we adopted for the, for the, um, booth, had a, um, funds remaining, remaining funds available, right? Because you had raised another $2,000, but.
Correct.
The previous budget had funds re, uh, available after the booth project, forgetting about the redundant equipment, was $1,800. And your new budget has increased the funds available, um, to $2,000 roughly. So it looks like, it, S and B may be more expensive, but ultimately, uh, the new budget is actually saving, it provides, you know, a little bit more money because of the new fundraising. Right? Am I getting that correct?
I'm going to defer this to John, if, if he's on the line. John, are you, uh, he's here, you want to turn on John's mic, please? John, are you available, or just on the line to look good? Okay, can we turn off his mic? Because obviously, we can't see him and we can't hear. John, can you turn off his mic? I mean, turn on his mic, oh, there you go, John, how are you? Okay, so do you want to talk about the evolution of the budget?
Uh, yes, um, once again, I think since the beginning of the project, at least 99% of the project was funded through donations. There have been some additional expenses, and there has been a change in at least one contractor. And uh, net-net, um, as Maureen, as you mentioned, the remaining funds went from approximately $1,800 to approximately $2,100. It's a rather small amount, um, I don't have, you know, all the nickels and dimes added together here. But it's still a rather small amount, considering the amount of changes that have happened, uh, and all the approvals that were needed to get the project to this juncture.
I'm not sure what approvals or anything have to do with it, John, but my bottom line.
Well, I'm sorry, but there was, there was an additional, uh, there was an additional, I guess, $4,200 regarding drafting. There was an architect, um, that I think was around $3,500. So there have been some changes going back almost a year. And, and we're still, you know, within a few hundred dollars of where we were, I believe.
Okay, the point I'm trying to make, and all those items were in the last budget that was approved by the board. The point I'm trying to make is that, um, all I'm saying is that the budget basically, and Mac is looking for comments on the budget. And what I'm saying is he's raised additional money, so the bottom-line cost, uh, the ultimate bottom-line cost, everything included, is roughly the same, if not slightly better, than the budget that we approved. So that's why I was okay with the budget, and that, that is what the numbers on the spreadsheet seem to indicate. Right?
Thank you, alright, are you done? So I can move on to Trustee McQ.
Yeah, I, I, I guess my, my bottom line is, gi- given where we are in the budget, and we, I just personally do not think this should be publicly funded. And uh, yeah, that, that's, that's issue number one. If, you know, you've done a, a miraculous job getting close to the, the finish line on this, uh, I think to get it over the finish line, we need to have it exclusively privately funded. And then, everything falls, all the pieces fall in, into place. Uh, you know, we've got a horrible issue with regard to our budget, uh, and whether or not we want to go with the tax cap. Do we have $20,000 actually means, $10,000 or $20,000 can actually mean something this year? So, uh, that, that's point number one. Point number two is, uh, I just, uh, you know, I haven't seen the to-ing and fro-ing with, uh, you know, Jody Zero. I understand that contract's getting close to being completion with S and B Total Home Care. I'm a, you know, I just, my question is, what were the three bidders we used and everything? And my other concern is, this, uh, discussion has been going on, as you rightly say, for over a year. And uh, I think we need to get repricing on the major components. So, you know, with regard to the windows and doors and Swiss, whatever it was called, which is the vendor there, I think we need to get, uh, rebid on pricing to make sure the pricing's still accurate. Just because, you know, the statute of limitations, I mean, we're, we're a year into this, and the pricing is probably good for 30 or 60 days, it's not good for 120 days. So that would be, uh, my couple, two cents there.
Alright, thank you, so just to, I'll try and take yourself one at a time, if I forget one, remind me. Um, several months ago, uh, I expressed concern that we were going to lose vendors and contractors and/or they were going to raise their prices. And I sent you a follow-up letter, in fact, the good news was, uh, and this was before Chet dropped. The good news was, uh, Swiss, they're doing the bulletproof stuff, that they were going to, everyone, all the way down the line, honored their price. And that's the way it stands today. And then, following that, uh, Chet dropped out and we brought in S and B. Now, in terms of, uh, vendors, uh, other bidders, as far as I'm concerned, that is a continued, S and B is a continuation of the five other bids I got. And for, for that aspect of the, uh, project. And I compared S and Bs to those. And that's how I believe that, uh, it's justifiable not to start rebidding.
No, that, that's fine, I just ask if we can get, uh, who the other five bidder, uh, other four bidders were and what the pricing is. That way, at least with regard to the accountants, we've done our due diligence with regard to pricing vendors, that, that's.
Yeah, oh, I understand, absolutely, and the, they are listed in the manual. Now, if you may recall, uh, no one had a large enough warehouse to build the project after they received the steel cage. So, uh, only, only Jody and Chet bid out of all the bidders that we sent out. Serise and others, there's, there's a list, and they refused to bid because they couldn't, they didn't have the space. Uh, S and B has the space. And so, if you want to compare them, all those numbers are in the, uh, manual. Or I can just get them for you and send them over. But that, that's the side, I'm assuming that you're going to be satisfied, that's, that's where it stands.
Yeah, I, I mean, get John to send, send them to all the trustees, and that way, we just get the comfort factor that we're compliant with, uh, what the controller and our accounting firm expects. That, that would be my, my only comment with regard to that, that's fine. I mean, as long as we've done our.
I'm sorry, Alan, are you finished?
Yeah.
Trustee Barnett?
I'd like to see the contracts, the final budget. I personally have reservations about the project. I think that right now, we're, we're building something in the midst of a, of a virus epidemic, that we don't know how, how it's going to, how long it's going to last, whether it's going to resurge again. And more importantly, what kind of changes can be made? But I'll keep those to myself, I've watched them, and, and I'd like to see the, uh, I'd like to see the, the budget, the final, what the final budget is, that we're back, we're, it's funded from pub, pub, private fund, not the, not the budget, and see the contracts.
Okay, thank you, so just to, just to recap, the last budget that was passed, it was already passed, I'm just giving you a new one. It was already agreed at that meeting that there would be funding out of the, excuse me, general budget, uh, for the balance of what wasn't raised. And I thought that was a fair compromise, because I was asked to do redundant equipment, which was not part of what I was raising for. So it seemed to me that was a reasonable compromise. So it seems that voting for this would be fairly easy and not complex, or voting against it. And that, that's what we would address first, uh, Trustee Barnett, because the others, the vendor agreements are next after this to discuss. So, um, I'm going to, uh, make a mo, move, I'm going to move that we pass the revised budget. For the, the booth. Can I get a second?
Second.
Uh, any discussion? All in favor?
Before you get to the discussion, sorry for two seconds, I mean, before you get to the vote, so, um, I just want, okay, we're only voting for the budget, right? We approved the.
That's what this resolution is, yeah, the revised budget.
I know, I'm reading.
It's a $2,000, but I felt I should bring it back?
No, no, the line.
For another second approval?
Right, no, line items have shifted, so you need to, to bring it back, so.
Yeah.
And the budget is roughly the same as the other budget. Uh, and the redundant equipment is, whether you put it in your original proposal or not, it's part of the whole package. Um, and, um, okay, so I just want to, I want to point out to you that we, approving the budget tonight, it, it doesn't mean that it's included, it is not included, as far as I can see, in the 2020, 21 budget right now. There's no line item, it would have to come out.
Right, yeah, that's right, we were talking about taking it out of the, just the budget, the fiscal year we're in now.
Right, but that, anything being taken, again, I just want to make sure we're all on the same page. Anything taken out of the surplus this year means there's less surplus to plug the hole for next year. So it definitely impacts next year's budget.
I guess, I guess when we had agreed several months ago to, uh, approve the budget, which included investment from the tax base. Uh, and it was supposed to come out of the, uh, current budget. And then I noticed when the current budget came out, there was no allocation for it. But, so, um, any more discussion?
Well, I just want to make sure that you understand, Mac, that it's not in the current budget. So one of the things that has to be cut, potentially, is the, is this item. So I vote for the budget, I think your budget, I, I'm going to support the budget, I think it's consistent with what was agreed in the past. I just want to make sure that there's no misunderstanding about what that means when we all vote for it.
No, I agree, I mean, I, I made my, I, I said how I feel about the redundant equipment, but I know that I stand alone there. Alright, so, um, all in favor?
I.
Trustee Gluck?
No.
Trustee McQ?
No.
Trustee Barnett?
No.
The noes have it, and the budget is not approved. Okay, so let's move on to the vendor agreements. We have two vendor agreements, uh, one is for Jody Zero, who's doing the steel cage. And the other is from S and B, who is doing the, uh, dress-out of the, uh, steel cage, primarily carpentry. Uh, any comments from the trustees?
Well, I'm confused about where it is. I have to ask Brian, Brian, or John, um, has, has the contracts as amended gone back to Jody Zero and S and B?
No, I, I, well, so what, I think the last, um, last revisions to these, uh, agreements were comments made by Trustee Gluck. And, um, we changed certain items that, you know, we felt were appropriate. And then, uh, there are some other items on that list that are really for the board to decide. And then, once the board decides what they want to do, we can either add or, as drafted, send them over. That's, that's where I'm, I'm aware of, of where they are.
And I sent an email around this to the trustees tonight, I think there's two or three points that the trustees have to decide on, according to the memo that came from, um, John and Brian.
Correct.
Right, so that's what we should probably be discussing, is those, uh, those amendments to the contract. And I think, if you want me to, John, are you familiar with the, um, things that were, that need to be discussed? You want to go through them, or you want?
Yeah, so, if you're, there is an email earlier today, and I see one item related to the Jody Zero contract. And the question was about, um, having, you know, some representations that subcontractors not be used or refused, lean releases be delivered. Again, we can add these, these, uh, representations and protections, um, if the board wants, um, and prepare those and give them to them, uh, the board to review.
Alright, so essentially, uh, when we complete that, uh, we then present the agreements to the vendors and see if they accept them. And then we can vote, so obviously, we need to table, uh, the vendor agreements this evening. Agreed?
Yes. Sorry?
An objection, I was going to table them?
No, I think it sounds reasonable, you know, it seems like it's a working document and we still don't have a final product.
Yeah.
Of the vendor agreements? I don't, I'm a little confused, Alan.
Sorry, with regard to the vendor agreements, yeah. In terms of the, the verbiage that people want in the contract. I, I support, I support, support your motion to table it, let me put it that way.
No, I, I, I just, I agree 100%, basically, Paul made some changes, they were given back to Paul. Uh, and now there's a few other things that people want to modify. And then, once that's done, then we have to send it to the vendors and see if there's any pushback there. So, before we would vote, so that's, yes, that's why I'm pushing it, you agree with that?
I think the lawyers, if, Mayor?
Yeah.
Yes, sir.
Lawyers are looking from direction, from, from some direction, from the board.
Exactly, yeah, we can put anything in there, we just need, you know, if you can send an email or memo or anything, say, we want X, we can.
John, right, that's what, because this, we cannot do this offline, you have to discuss it now.
Yeah.
So that's, that's, and that's.
And that's what I said, I think we're all on the same page, I said the same thing. Alright, so, let's move on.
Mac, you're not understanding, we need to discuss the points right now, in a public meeting, and it's three points, in a public meeting, um, in order to move on, and that's what John is saying.
Yep, alright, you have the floor.
Okay, well, I'll go through the points.
So the, the last point is actually a point in both contracts, um, so I don't have to necessarily, it's really two points. Um, and then the, the, there was another question that related to an August 14th resolution, and I believe this was a part of a, that resolution, a condition that the contracts.
Why don't you give every point, just before, listing them all, why don't you just go through every point, John?
Okay, so point one relates to the Jody Zero contract, and the question was whether you should have a representation that subcontractors not or not be, not be used, or if they're used, lean releases will be delivered. The second point.
Okay, stopping right there, let's just get them taking checks off. Uh, I think that's, that was Paul's comment, I think it's a good comment, I support including it. Anybody object? Anybody object? Okay, Alan and Alan and Mac, anybody object, nobody objects? Okay, next point.
Okay, so, so that same question is actually raised in the S&amp;B contract. And I presume that the board wants the same protection there, okay?
Yeah, I would say yes.
No problem. And then the last point is related to the S&amp;B contract. And the question relates to an August 14th resolution. And it asks, you know, does the contracts fit out with the vendor provide protections to the village in case there was a failure for the vendor to timely perform its obligations? And which protections does the board want to include? This is really a question for the board to say whether or not this condition has been satisfied with the agreement. But there are some examples, like escrow funds, a performance bond, or other measures that are reasonably satisfactory to the board. Again, if the board finds out the protections that are in the agreement are satisfactory, then that condition has been satisfied.
And there really aren't any protections in there, such as the escrow, the letter, Jody Zero has a letter of credit.
Correct.
This one does not.
Yeah, so the protections in here would be like, such as when the frame is delivered to S&amp;B and then they begin work, that the village has to approve the work that was already done before S&amp;B starts. For example, that's a simple protection, that that contract would not take effect until the approval is given by the board. You know, and then other inspection and review and approvals throughout the process of construction between them finishing their build-outs and to, right before they deliver the final product to the premises, and then approval at that point, say, the product's good, that the booth can now be placed on the mat, or whatever it's called, at that point. And then there's some other protections, like insurances and things, indemnifications, and so forth, some standard language.
So what we were looking for is something, it's really financial protection. So, Jody Zero has a letter of credit. Maybe it's as simple as we include that letter of credit language in the S&amp;B contract to make it consistent.
Okay.
Paul, you okay with that?
Yeah, yeah. I mean, I could conceivably be okay with less than that. It's just that this was a, you know, this was a condition that was part of the overall project. And I didn't see anything there specifically for, as in, timely performance. Because we've just gone through a very bad experience on a major project, where performance was not so timely. And absent having, you know, the leverage of something there, you know, we would not have wound up in as good a position as we would have. But for this particular vendor and this particular project, it may well be that it's, you know, it's not necessary. If there's a rationale for that, we should hear that. I'm not, you know, looking for anything that's really over the top or unnecessary here, I think.
Okay.
Okay, and I agree also with these new conditions for the agreements. I think they're sound, I'd rather have them than not have them.
Okay.
Anyone else care to comment? Okay, so, if I understand correctly, guys, and let me know, those changes will be made by John, sent back to us. And if everything's copasthetic, in other words, what we expected to happen tonight is there, then we will deliver these to the respective vendors and see what feedback we get there. Everyone agree with that?
Yes, I agree.
All right, terrific, thank you. All right, now, let me see what else we have. It's a long meeting, huh? Oh, okay, I wanted to, let me see if it's okay. Right, okay, so, new business, a lack of security in the South Gate, and then Weewaw Road, and between Weewaw Road and Warwick Brook Road. So, if you could put up that document, John?
Okay, yes.
Share that document. And so, what I, here's the story. In general, and because of the coronavirus pandemic, I've been thinking about improving security at the South Gate. I'm proposing a naturally patinaed iron fence to stretch from the right and left of the gatearm. And I'm proposing that the fence, oh, excuse me, I beg your pardon. And the fence has been recommended by the bar, because they approved it for another client. They liked the aesthetics. And we all believe it'll blend into the natural environment. And it'd be hard, you know, it won't stick out. Now, I would like to, if I get approval tonight, I'd like to take it to the bar for a formal approval. So what we're showing you tonight is a diagram of where the fence would go. And there's also photographs of the fence. And I just want to check, does everyone see it?
Yes.
See it, okay. So, the recommendation to do this, and we're calling it as a deterrent, added deterrent, we can't stop everybody. This view was shared by the police chief, Dave Conklin, John Ledwith, and Jeff Boss. So, we got it priced, and the price came in at $6,000, materials and installation and welding from Jody Zero. So, does anyone have any, do the trustees have any comments?
I'm happy to comment. I think it's a waste of taxpayers' money. I think we need far stronger signage at the back gate. And I think we need far greater vigilance by our police officers, showing a greater presence. We dealt with this issue, I guess it's two years ago, where we, the police increased enforcement. We gave criminal trespass tickets. People appeared in front of the court and everything. And that sent an exceedingly strong message that the Village of Tuxedo Park was for residents and guests of residents, and not for anybody to come into the park. So, my view is, let's put signage, and put some decent signage that's visible and strongly worded, and deal with it that way. Increase their presence and deal with it that way first. I don't think a six-foot fence is really going to, you know, it's, it increases it, but there's still plenty of room to walk around on either side. I just don't see that as doing anything, and I don't really see it as additive. I think we should take other measures first, and then this is more as a last resort.
Yeah, no, I appreciate that. The, yeah, the fence on either side would be a deterrent. So if you're a trespasser, let's say, or you intended trespass, and you go up, and there's only the gate, as it stands now, you slip right by, slip through, really don't care. But with signage, which I agree we should have, and this additional fencing, you walk around the fencing, and you're like, really consciously planning to trespass. But, let me move on to, let's see, trustee Barnett, how do you feel about it?
Oh, boy. It kind of reminds me of the issue, the border fencing of the southern border. I think the, I think the biggest deterrent is vigorous prosecution and arrests. So I kind of, I kind of agree with that one. I think that we tell the police to vigorously arrest somebody and we prosecute them and put them in front of the judge.
Yeah, no, I appreciate that, we've done that in the past. Here's the issue that I discussed with the chief, and John and Jeff. It's difficult for them to catch a trespasser, because they, right now, they just slip right past the gate. And by the time it registers on the camera, if it does, these guys are long gone. So, that's why I'm saying a deterrent would also assist reducing the number of trespassers. And I think any precautions we can take, because what we've learned with the coronavirus is a positive thing, but I hear you. Okay, let me move on to trustee McQ. I beg your pardon, trustee Gluck?
Yeah, so, I ride my bike out the South Gate quite often. So, and the, you know, the gate doesn't always open on the outside when you're on a bicycle. So my cure for that is I simply walk under the gate. And I'm kind of scratching my head over why somebody wouldn't just do that on the other side as well. It's really not very hard to do that.
You know, right, I agree. The idea is to make an impression on a trespasser that they could go through the gate. But now, because there's these deterrents on each side, they have to really think twice about whether they want to do it. But you're absolutely right. In fact, there's so many weaknesses in our system with this, you know, we have a huge border, and anybody could sleep in. It's just, it's more of a symbol and a deterrent. But I take your point. Let's see, trustee Cohen?
I was just adding, you know, particularly, particularly given the earlier discussion on budget issues. It's, it's kind of my, my, more in the category of more nice rather than need.
Did you mention first the budget?
That's what he's mentioning now.
Yeah, okay, okay. All right, so, trustee Cohen?
Yes, my view is that a message on a board, on a sign, a big sign that says something clear, right where that, where you want the gate to be, would be a very big deterrent, a lot less expensive, and a lot more attractive. So I'm opposed to this completely, thank you.
Okay, is the chief available? And if so, would you like to comment on the deterrent factor?
Yes, I'm here, can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Okay, well, you know, like I said to you when we met out there, you know, that day to assess it, right now, there's no signage at all. And that's going to be the biggest deterrent, is strong wording signs saying that we will prosecute. You know, one of the biggest problems that we've been seeing is, what trustee Gluck just said, is a lot of people are going underneath the fence, underneath the gate. Because, like I said, there is no sign, there is no wording at all. So, we couldn't even really prosecute. You know, even if we do make arrests right now, it's going to be very hard to prosecute it without having any signage saying, "Keep out," or, you know, "No trespassing," or however it's worded. So, I think signage is first and foremost.
Agreed. Chief, I have an idea. Let's say we don't, well, obviously, we're not going to put the deterrent in. But is there a way to hang stuff or attach stuff below the gatearm? So, and ending just above the road, that would prevent people from crawling underneath?
Well, I'm not sure how heavy that arm is. I believe it's made out of plastic, right?
Yeah, correct.
Yeah, so I don't think, you know, anything that's not going to be movable, I think it'd be too, I don't know if we'd be able to affix something to that or not.
Yeah, in other words, this thing, right, so this, I'm suggesting something hanging below the gate, like an electric fence, kidding. And so, you, you know, you couldn't go underneath, it would be difficult to go underneath and through the gate like Paul says he does.
Right, well, and he's not the only one. You know, like I said, and one of the biggest problems we've been seeing lately is a lot of the people coming in that are going under the gate or just bypassing the gate, they happen to be village residents. We send a car out there to stop them, and they live in the village. And, you know, the police officer working in the keep yells through the speaker, "Hey, come over to the speaker so, you know, we can talk." Some people ignore them, and then some people come over to the speaker, and, you know, they're vetted and they happen to live in the village.
Yeah, that's a very good idea, too. In other words, residents should check in.
Exactly.
So that the police could distinguish between who's trespassing and who's a resident.
Exactly.
Mayor?
All right, well, anyway, so this proposal, there's no support for this proposal. So, there's no reason to, pardon me? So there's no reason to continue the discussion. You can take that document down, John, thank you very, very much for doing that for us. And, and let's see, Alan, did you want to say something before we moved on?
Yeah, I was just asking, suggesting, whether or not we could just agree on some verbiage for a sign, and we get some signage put up there? Because I think that will facilitate the chief being able to do his job and might act as a deterrent. So it's the first step. And the second step might be doing what you're recommending, or putting a lure boom on the gatearm mechanism. But, I mean, I think something, the fact where we have restricted access, residents and invited guests only beyond this point, violators will be prosecuted by the order of Village of Tuxedo Park Police Department. Something strongly worded like that at least sends a message. And then we can, and then the chief can increase his presence there and see if that does the trick. I mean, is the chief still on or not?
So, Alan, I agree. I agree. What I did, I sent, last week, I took the sign that trustee Gluck and Cohen suggested, and I took what the chief had written, and I took the one that I had written, which was the same language as the one, the temporary sign I put up a year ago. And that temporary sign worked, unfortunately, it was stolen. But this, a new sign would be secure and cemented into the road and so forth. So I did an exercise for everybody where I combined them, and I sent it to everybody. And so, can we pick off that list? Hmm, did you receive the analysis I did?
I don't remember.
I saw your three iterations, I prefer my own, which was taking Paul's and Marine's, but I don't want to split hairs on this. So, I just think, as long, the sooner we get something, and I think we should get, what I had Jeff do with regard to signage going across pond number three in the Weewaw, get the highway department vendor to do it. Then it looked, one, it's far more robust, and two is, it looks far more imposing when somebody looks at it, rather than something stapled onto the bulletin board by the gatearm mechanism.
Yeah, absolutely.
So, I think that adds, you know, gravitas and hopefully acts as a deterrent.
It does. All right, so, I'll just resend everybody the compromise of all the people's input. And if we clear it, we'll give it to Jeff, or Alan, you can give it to Jeff and move forward. How's that for everybody? Okay, good. Now, let's move on. Okay, so, we have to move to approving the purchase of the clarifier sewer pumps, the approved paving in Clubhouse Road, authorized bidding for the sledge removal, and discuss the election poll location. So, Alan, do you want to start with those, since they're, I think they're your baby? Alan, you're, I'm sorry, you're muted.
Sorry about that. All right, so, I, with regard to the clarifier and the sewer plan, I'd like to make a motion that the board of trustees approve the purchase of two sewer pumps and one clarifier at a total, and that we need to change the spelling of that, at a total cost of $24,129 from fleet, the lowest quote of three received, and $1,800 for electrical installation, for a total of $25,929 to be expended from budget line item 8130.4A, which is sewer contractual, with budget transfer from line items 8130.1A sewer personnel, $22,000, and 4142.1A snow removal personnel of $4,000 into the line item 8130.4A sewage contractual. Basically, what this is doing is just making sure we have it appropriately funded in the right classification, but this is all within budget.
You want us to second it first, and then we can?
Oh, sorry, do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you.
Alan, no, why don't you?
Oh, sorry.
Do your discussion. Yeah.
With, with regard to funding, this issue had come up in November, December of last year. We decided to take a little bit of a flyer with regard to replacing these pumps till we had a better sense of where we were with regard to budget. Now we have greater confidence given we're at the financial year. So this is within the DPW budget, but we're just changing line items to accurately reflect where the money's coming from. So that's why we have to transfer from sewage personnel into sewage contractual and from sewage contractual in those two line item transfers.
Understood. Any other discussion? I'll call the roll. Trustee Glock.
Yes.
Trustee McHugh.
Yes.
Trustee Barnett.
Yes.
Trustee Cohn.
Yes.
The eyes have it. Next.
Thank you. Next one is with regard to paving of Clubhouse Road. We do not need to go out to bid on this because it's the Orange County Department of Public Works bid. So it's a preset bid. So Jeff had gone out to get a quote on actually what it would cost to do the road. So this is the following. I'd like to make a motion that the Board of Trustees approve the paving of Clubhouse Road at a cost of $46,000 to be expended from budget line item 5110.4A as allocated in the 2019-2020 general fund budget. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
No.
Okay, I'll take the roll. Trustee Glock.
Aye.
Trustee McHugh.
Aye.
Trustee Barnett.
Aye.
Trustee Cohn.
Aye.
The eyes have it. Okay, let's move on.
Sorry, that, that's, do you want me to keep on going or?
Well, let me just go back. I don't have the agenda in front of me.
Oh, do you want me to keep on doing it then?
Well, I, yeah, these are yours, right? The sludge and the, well, until the election anyway. Let, yeah, do the sludge.
Okay, the, the sludge, basically, we're authorizing the village clerk to authorize to go to bid with regard to sludge removal at the sewer plant. And we currently use a company called Earth Care, which has just changed names. So I'd like to make a motion that the Board of Trustees authorize the village clerk to advertise for bids for sludge removal services for the village for the contract period, May 1st, 2020 through April 30th, 2021, and that the bid opening date be set for Tuesday, April 29th, 2020 at 2:00 PM. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
On to it. Alan, I'll call the roll. No problem. I'm going to call the roll and trustee Glock.
Aye.
Trustee McHugh.
I forgot to say one thing for public discussion. We don't, we obviously don't want, quite often in the past, we've had contractors appear at village office to see us opening the bid documents. So I guess John and or Brian's going to need to advise, but may, maybe we have to have a Zoom meeting when we open them. So the vendors who want to see us opening it and knowing whether or not they're going to receive the bid can do it. That's a question, that's all.
Yeah, I would support that. I think that makes a lot of sense. So we'll find out.
Places to electronic submissions and in some, before you go on, we could give advisement. But you can do a video conference to open the bids. The bids can be slid, you can select a limited window of time, say 15, 20 minutes where bids can be submitted via email. And then the bids can then be read out loud through a Zoom meeting. But we could give the board an opinion after tonight's meeting.
Okay.
Okay, so I'll continue with the roll. Trustee Barnett.
Aye.
Trustee Cohn.
Aye.
Eyes have it. Okay, who wants to attack and number E, announce election poll location in time for June 16th? And obviously, people will have to understand that it's going to be dependent on state regs coming out.
I've got in front of me. Do you want me to read it or not?
Absolutely. Thank you very much.
Okay. I'd like to make a motion that the Board of Trustees affirm that the village election for two trustees will be held on Tuesday, June 16th, 2020 in the village hall with the polls opening from 7:00 AM to 9:00 PM, which will be contingent upon New York State regulations regarding COVID-19. Do I have a second?
Second. Discussion? I'll call the roll. Trustee Glock.
Aye.
Trustee McHugh.
Aye.
Trustee Cohn.
Aye.
Trustee Barnett.
Aye.
Eyes have it. Okay, now, we have another comment section. If you would like to make a comment, please click the raised hand and John will recognize it and we will call on you.
I don't see any, any people listed for public comments unless trustee Cohen has her hand raised.
Who? Who has her hand raised?
I haven't. I wanted to make a comment before on something else.
Sure, please.
No, no, I've done it.
I don't, I don't believe there's any.
Okay, last call. Okay, so let's move on to village vouchers or we can skip to the executive session. Any comments from the trustees?
No.
All right. To the audience, I just wanted to thank you for bearing with us. We're doing our best with this Zoom. I think we actually had a very successful meeting. And we're about to enter executive session, which is conducted in private by the board. So if you intend to leave, again, I want to thank you. This executive session could go on for an hour. So just to give you an indication. So I move the Board of Trustees leave the public meeting to enter into executive session to address, hold on. I just blew my whole computer. To address a particular person. May I have a second?
Second.
Sorry, is this an employee? I hope. Can we, can we narrow it a little bit from a particular person to an employee or?
That's fine. Yeah, to an employee. No problem. Thank you. Do, is there any discussion? All in favor?
All right.
Eyes have it. We are now to go to an executive session. And John, you want to set us up with a private room or breakout room?
I don't have those features available.
Okay, how about you, Paul?
I will do my best.
Oh, no.
We appreciate it.
No, manually. All right, the one room, manually create a room. Sign. I had the same problem last time. How do I assign me?
So you, you're going to assign who you want to breakout room and then you'll have the option to join that specific room? You don't assign yourself?
Got it. Okay. Now where do I sign? Hello, why, Paul?
Sorry.
Trustee Glock, I'd only suggest that you stop the recording here because it will record.
Meeting. And so we can turn the tape back on?
We gotta leave the breakout room.
Yeah.
Okay, we leave it and go back into the public scenario. All right, now how do we do that? Oh, there it is on the bottom right, everybody.
Correct.
Red, return to main session. Only one that I don't see.
No Marine.
Okay, well, we don't, we have a quorum. So I'm gonna, unless anyone has an issue, I'm gonna adjourn the meeting. Adjourn the regular meeting. Can I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
All right.
Eyes have it. Good meeting, guys. See you soon.